Welcome to the zoning board of appeals. Let's see, please silence your cell phones and note that this meeting is being taped by FCTV. Any private party recording this hearing? If so, step up to the podium and request permission. No one, I guess. We have the staff up here. We have on my right, Mark Fineran, on my right. Next to me is regular voting member. Frank Duffy is our clerk. I'm Suzanne Murphy, the chair. Next to me is Jim Morse, the vice chair. On his left is Tony Petucci, associate member, and our newest associate member, Nick Haney.
Hanny.
Hanny. Sorry. The zoning board of appeals is charged with applying the state zoning statutes as well as the town zoning bylaws in reviewing and voting on this application. All decisions are made through the public hearing process. Our goal is to hear testimony from the applicants and the public and to allow a full and fair discussion of the project prior to closing the hearing process in 180 days and reaching a decision. Number one, to begin each hearing, the clerk will read the public announcement for the hearing and read pertinent information from the file. Number two, the applicant or the applicant's representative will then have 15 minutes to make a presentation. Time may be extended by the vote of the board. Three, the board will then question the applicant. Four, next, we'll do this first. The public can have comments on anything that's not on our agenda, and you have two minutes to have your comment, and the board will not partake. Does anybody have any public comments? Come on up?
Right now.
Sure. Not regarding any application?
I was going to wait for the next.
Okay. So you're good, though? Okay. All right, so tonight we have a pretty busy meeting. We have three 40Bs. And for the first one, we have 17 Walker, and we're only doing the architectural peer review tonight on that case itself. And if you want to come up and start her off, please.
My name is Cliff Bomer. I was retained to be the peer reviewer, the architectural peer reviewer for 17 Walker Street. I did visit the site about a month ago, it's August 16th, and submitted a letter report to you on the 3rd of September. I'll go into a little bit of detail about that, but not tons. I will say that I think the theme that ran through most of that letter, and in fact, I highlighted it in separate color to help really get it down to the points that mattered the most to me. I think, for me, as far as the quality of the submission, I think it was at a normal level for projects that are at this level of development, at this early in the process. But there were a number of items that, for me, I felt needed to be added to the submission to help everybody's understanding specifically about how this project really fits into context. So that was a recurring theme in my letter is, can you please provide more documentation so that we can, I can, you can, and the public can have a better sense, a more thorough sense of how this building might fit into the existing context. There were some other points, but I'll stick with that just for the moment. Since I wrote that letter on the 3rd, I have gotten a lot of materials. You've gotten a lot of materials submitted that have helped a lot. There was a revised civil engineering plan, I think that came in the day before yesterday, a site plan. Attorney Moynihan submitted a long and thorough point-by-point response to my letter. There was also a short letter from Falmouth Engineering that was submitted. And then, of course, there were some, that was really the most important part, were these revised architectural drawings that included exactly what I was hoping to see, which were some bird's eye view of the development that included nearby walkable context as well as some street-level perspectives, which is, of course, where we all really experience a building from. So what I would say, I'll start with my summary, is, and I just went back to the site, which, as you know, is about a three-minute walk from here. I went back to the site today and looked at it again. And I believe, this is my belief, that the scale of the project as proposed and where it sits on the site is working. I'm happy with the scale of the building. There is, as you know, a building of pretty similar scale, three stories, right at the corner of Main and Walker Street. And I think this building, it does have a kind of nice dialogue with that building. And in fact, even two homes down on Chancery Lane towards the west, that home has what appears to be an occupied third story. So I think it, overall, the massing works. As you know, there was an original proposal, and it changed quite a lot from that, the actual massing of the building. And I think that improved it. I think if you look at Walker Street, I think, and the architect, I'm sure, has spoken for himself, but the notion of having small-scale gables that relate to the continuing line of gables that you see walking down Walker Street towards this building works. I have a few minor comments about architectural things, the slope of the gables, things like that, roof pitch, that because these materials are very new, I haven't written anything else, but I'd happily capture a lot of the small architectural comments I have in a separate memo. I think there are, from the very beginning, the concern I had, which is often a concern in a relatively dense environment, is when the proposal includes parking at grade level, you worry about whether you're really improving the streetscape, because right now, when you walk by the site, there are parked cars right on both, actually kind of everywhere, Chancery, Glenwood, and on Walker Street with the next building to the north, there are parked cars that back right up into Walker Street. So this, having an opportunity to really improve that corner, nail down the corner, create a better, effective street wall, which there isn't there right now at that corner of Chancery and Walker Street, you have to be careful about that decision. And certainly, having habitable space along Walker Street was the right decision. And placing the parked cars behind facade what appears to be, has all the appearances of a residential facade on Chancery was, in my opinion, it's the right way to handle it. It certainly was the only way to fit parking on the site with any kind of, any building that would approach 11 units. I think there are another kind of bigger, so I'm just bringing that up as a, that was a concern, and I think it was sufficiently addressed, dealing with that kind of tough problem of pedestrian traffic going by a level of a building that's actually parking. I will say that on that small architectural comment, the renderings, the elevations depict coiled security grates that are acting as the garage doors, both on Glenwood and Chancery. And I would encourage the design team to really pursue a high-quality grate that really doesn't look like it's a security grate. It has an attractive appearance that would complement the architecture of the building. The other kind of bigger design issue that is, that came out in my letter was the, as you know, there are five units on the two upper levels and one unit on the grate at the at-grade level. And given the proximity of the building to where the pedestrian walkway is, even though that's not a very well-defined walkway, there is pedestrian traffic along Walker Street, going south on Walker Street. And having a residential unit at grade in a denser, walkable environment certainly does create, or has the potential to create, privacy issues in that apartment. I did bring that up in the letter. The response was that that could be dealt with through the window treatment, which is true. It can be done, but in my, in the sort of dream scenario, I'm not the developer, I'm not the architect, so I can't speak to the feasibility of this. But in an ideal world, I would think, given the context, it would function, that space that's currently the one-bedroom unit along Walker Street would function better as a small commercial space, or perhaps community space for the residents of the building, because right now, there is no common space save the entryway. There is an area that could be developed into a mail area. There's now bike storage in where the trash room is shown. So some of the things I brought up in my letter were addressed. But in this ideal world, and I know nothing about the economics of the project, that would be, in my mind, an improvement to the project. The other kind of dream scenario in my mind would be if there were a way to improve the walkways that go along, certainly along Walker Street. It is really ill-defined right now, and if you're a pedestrian, you're only staying in a walkable, the walkable area is defined by paint on the pavement. And given that this is, I think, a well-traveled pedestrian path between Main Street and all the wonderful amenities on Main Street and the neighborhood, the residential neighborhood to the south, whether the developer did it or the town got together and invested in improving that sidewalk, that would really, really help. Similarly, even carrying a crosswalk across Chancery continuing south on Walker Street would be a very nice improvement to make. I think, when I went back today, I felt even more strongly about this because it's so ill-defined right now. And I think this building, having that mass there and certainly having it occupied space largely by people instead of parked cars, is a big improvement. But just thinking about how to improve that connectivity so that it really operates on more of a kind of urban or town scale instead of just an individual building, it's just another way to help tie it in. As far as the material of the building, you know, it's very typical, certainly shingles and clapboards. I think the historic commission had a little bit of an issue with the panel, the board and batten. Actually, I do share that. I don't think, I think the building is small enough that the areas that are called out as board and batten actually, I think, could be better either, particularly on the curved facade, I think, would work better as the shingle material, which is a traditional cladding that's used specifically to follow curved surfaces. And perhaps where there are infill areas shown as board and batten, they may be improved by being clapboards. That's my own opinion. Again, I think the reasoning behind it is more that the scale of the building, I don't think it needs any more than those two primary materials, shingles and clapboards. A couple very small comments on some of the, my reasoning for asking what I did ask for in the letter. I did ask for that swept path analysis, which demonstrated the efficacy of the parking spaces, particularly on Glenwood, and that really had, that had really very little to do with not believing the images that you've all seen. There were some images submitted by the engineering team that were a field test, that were showing cars parking there. And there are clearly parking spaces painted along there. I was thinking just more with respect for ensuring the neighbor who is directly across on Walker Street that that has been thoroughly studied and figured out. Because right now, it is just painted lines. What's going to happen is columns, entryways, you know, it's not quite the same thing. So that was the reason I brought that up. It is a simple template that the civil engineer applies to the drawings to determine turning radii and whether it's working. The, what else? They're very small, and again, I can capture these in a, I think, a very brief memo at this point. I believe in Attorney Moynihan's response letter. She did state that the project would be an all-electric project, which certainly is the way the world is going these days. Small detail, but the civil plan does show a gas line going into the building, which, of course, is a fossil fuel. So I don't know if that was intentional or just missed that in the drawings. What else? I think that may be about it. I certainly can answer any questions you have. Also, on the civil plan, it is called out on the architectural site plan, the pavers. As you know, I think you've seen in the drawings, the civil engineer is working with the correct footprint now, so those are coordinated, the footprints are coordinated. The civil doesn't really call out the rendering pattern. I think it's in the architectural, but just a couple tiny sorts of coordination issues. One other point that I did bring up in the letter that I was just thinking about now when I was over at the site, I mentioned the power lines and whether the, and it was kind of a question, right? I did go look, and the power lines along, for those of you who may not know, along Chancery are, that's a pretty serious power line going down Chancery. So I'll just point that out. Currently, the buildings appear to all be fed by pole-mounted transformers along Chancery. So I think the odds of maybe any serious infrastructure change along Chancery may be very slim, just given that a lot, it appears that a lot of buildings are fed off those lines that go down Chancery. So there will be issues during construction, because I believe they are probably within 10 feet of the face of the building, and there are OSHA restrictions about, but that's all further down the line. The power, the lines that go down Glenwood do not appear to be a big issue, one of them. I think it appears to be, you know, it might be Verizon or Comcast, not a really big deal. So the, I think my only point is that determining whether, my experience of working with utilities is our first pass, is we show the utility where we would like the transformer to be, and then we negotiate with them. You know, we place where we believe, when we're doing buildings, we put it where we believe is the place that is both serviceable but doesn't interfere with the site plan, is, you know, aesthetically acceptable area. So I don't know where that's at, whether this building will need a transformer other than a pole-mounted transformer. There was, I did ask for a preliminary construction management plan, and I will point out that I concur with Attorney Moynihan about her interpretation of what constitutes an acceptable level of drawings. But I didn't stop myself from still asking it, just only because I find it's better the more material you can get out there. Everybody understands it, and there are no surprises. But I don't take any issue with her, with her specific statements about exhibits that I was hoping for that may not be appropriate. I didn't see anything that couldn't easily be covered in a condition, in any case, as opposed to having to see the exhibit up front. So I guess maybe, do you have any questions about it?
Question time.
Okay.
Mark, do you want to start? I don't have much, but what are your personal feelings on, like Hardy plank and cementitious sightings?
Thank you for asking that. It's a, it's a material that's been in really popular use for, popular use for maybe 20 years. And it was in use commonly in southern United States before it made it up north. So the manufacturer, not just Hardy, but also the other cementitious siding manufacturers, it's taken them a while to get their detailing figured out. There are many buildings that I did early on with Hardy using their details, and the material really didn't hold up well. My opinion now is that it, they have figured it out for a New England climate. And if it's properly detailed, it can, it's a very serviceable material. It can hold paint for a very long time. It took a while for everybody to get used to it. It's very heavy for workmen to use. It's got a lot of interesting qualities, but it should be a material that, particularly if you buy it pre-painted, you can buy it pre-finished, so it's cooked on finish in the factory, that will last quite a long time. And as long as it's properly handled, ends are sealed, et cetera. So it's mainly about workmanship that really determines how successful that material is in the long run.
I agree with you completely. And I mean, it's all about who puts it on.
Yeah.
But it gets kind of a bad rap, and done properly, it's, I mean, you can get 30 years out of a surface.
Yeah.
And I mean, that's, okay, I was just.
And they're proposing the shingle material as well as the clapboards. And actually, we've used that here on the Cape on a number of projects in historic districts. And it's the same comment, just put it on properly, really follow the instruction manual, and it shouldn't be an issue.
The only thing about the shingles is, it's better to keep them above ground level because they're difficult to repair.
Absolutely. And actually, that was one of the comments in my letter, is that there was a, I forget, it was in a narrative about, I think it may have been an architectural design narrative, that mentioned there was a stone base, a cast stone base to the building, and they did call that out. Now, it wasn't called out in the elevations before, but they have committed to that.
Okay.
I want to say one more thing. I forgot to say this, is that the, it's back to the very beginning about scale of the building. The architect has held the scale down as tight as you really could for, you know, a multi-story building. They're showing a floor-to-floor height of 10 feet, and you really couldn't get any shorter than that and expect to have proper ceiling heights and be able to chase any internal duct work you might be chasing. So they have kept it down, but at the same time, I do appreciate the gesture of continuing the roof line up to create an area that's something like three feet lower than the top ridge where the mechanical equipment sits. So I think that will do a very good job, particularly in this building that doesn't need any really big equipment. It should do a very good job of screening the mechanical equipment from street level. So you see in the renderings that you don't see any mechanical equipment. I think that's accurate, from what I can tell.
Well, that's good. Frank, do you have any questions?
Yes. I want to thank you for commenting on the walkability issue, which is something that has occurred to me. I've been out to that site a few times, and that has bothered me. As you're coming down Walker Street, there's a sidewalk that runs along the side of Ben &amp; Bill's ice cream place.
Yeah.
And then it abruptly ends.
That's right.
And there's a dumpster there. And then there's a few cars that park head in against the back of the other building, and then there's nothing in front of the site. Can there be a sidewalk or continuation there? I think that it's really necessary to have something like that, because it's not just the residents, it's a lot of people walking up and down that street.
Yeah.
All the time.
Yeah.
And I think this is something that should be addressed, even if, whether the town has to do it or whether the applicant has to do it, but somebody should address that issue. I think it's really, I don't like it.
My understanding is that there, whomever would do it, there is space to put a walkway. There will have to be some cooperation with the neighbor to the north, because those cars just, you're right, there's a dumpster. And in fact, this evening, there was a car parked.
In front of the dumpster, out into the street.
Yeah. So it's an issue. But that's, actually, that's one thing I really like about this project, is that it makes some, it makes sense out of some of them building massing down at that end of the street. But I think where it can really hit a home run is if it really helps with that pedestrian connection from Main Street south.
There is room then, on the site, to make some improvements.
I think there is. I mean, the engineer can speak to that, but I think what happens up at the corner store is, there's the sidewalk, and then there's a kind of filled-in area, then there's a curb. It's really a mess. Even up there, it's not a continuous paved area. It's pretty messy.
Okay. Well, that's something I'd like us to look at. You mentioned also the proximity of power lines to this project.
Yeah.
And if you walk around there, the first thing that comes to your mind is, there's like a lot of visual pollution over there. It's really ugly in terms of the power lines. Given the proximity of the power lines to the building, is the power company going to have to put these red plastic?
They will during construction.
During construction?
Yeah. Well, you know better than I do. I think they're close enough that I don't think they'd even, they wouldn't be able to put on siding to the building without having protecting those power lines.
And do they have to stay on after occupancy?
Not to the best of my knowledge. But that's a good question. I think it's a fair question for the developer, but it's not my experience. It's more of an OSHA issue during construction.
Well, I know that in some places, once they go up, they stay up for a couple of years, but that's.
Yeah.
Anyway. Third question. I know that the plans right now are not really of great detail, but I'd like to know, what are the handicap access issues with this building? And have you made any observations on the plans about the adequacy of them?
I have. They are correct that, given the unit count, they, and actually, it's, this is homeownership, isn't it?
No.
Oh, it's rental, okay.
Rental.
Given the unit count, they do not need any group-two units. So they don't need any fully accessible units by the Architectural Access Board. So they are fine with that. However, because it is an elevator-fed building, all of the units need to be group-one compliant, which is a lower level of compliance that, they're generically known as sort of adaptable units. And there are restrictions about door sizes, access into the bathroom, accessible pathways to all of the common elements in the building. There aren't a lot of common elements here, but there are, and actually, one of them is a question that I brought up in my letter. But from my review, if they haven't fully met it because of the current state of the design, I wouldn't anticipate any issues meeting that group-one requirement.
So that would be something that the building commissioner would have to review when he sees the final plans, and he would be in charge of enforcing that?
Yes.
Okay.
That's exactly right. There was a suggestion that surfaced, maybe from the trust, Affordable Housing Trust. There was a suggestion that surfaced maybe from the trust, Affordable Housing Trust. There was a suggestion about the, asking the proponent to consider doing one group two unit. That would be great. I mean, my own experience in doing a lot of affordable housing, there is a real shortage of accessible units, but they are under no legal obligation to provide any fully accessible units. The one thing I did want to hit on, and I'm glad you brought this up, was the access, an important part of the requirement, even in a building that doesn't have 20 units in a rental building that would require a fully accessible unit, that notion of an accessible path to all of the amenities, that's fundamental. And the building does have an elevator, it has a clear, what could clearly be accessible path out the door onto Walker Street. I did question access to the trash room though, because that's also required, having an accessible path to the trash room. I know, and right now, to get to the trash room, it appears that you, if all the cars were parked, it could potentially be an issue. You know, accessible path has to, there's a minimum width, it has to be flat, there can't be bumps greater than half an inch, there's a whole string of requirements. So we would want to make sure, and this was another thing, the commissioner would confirm that there are accessible pathways to all of the common elements in the building.
Thank you.
Can I just ask one?
Yeah.
On that, just for my own adification, what'd you call it, tier two handicap?
Group two.
Is that, group two.
Group two.
So is that basically just all doors are three feet and halls are a little bit wider?
Well, that's more group one. The group two has accessible kitchen, you know, with the.
Different heights.
The ability to work at a sink. Refrigerators have to be a particular type, there has to be a wall oven. That's group two. And they're exempt from group two. Group one is mainly just a little bit bigger dimensions in ensuring maneuverability within the apartment.
Okay.
The kind of the concept is that if, in order to be adaptable, you want to be able to adapt without having to spend zillions of dollars. And even on the, you know, the federal is enforced differently, you know, through the reasonable accommodation statutes. But a group one level apartment is a really good idea because it should not take a whole lot of work to adapt it to somebody who might develop mobility issues.
And to piggyback on that quickly, does there need to be a handicap parking spot?
No.
Does not?
No, because they don't.
Because it's under 20?
Yeah. Which is, I think I said that in the letter, that I think it would be a terrific thing to provide a group two level, but at that point, they would have to have an accessible parking space. And right now, they don't have, I don't think they have space for an accessible parking space.
Okay. Jim?
No, thank you. My question's unanswered.
Tony?
I've got a quick question. You mentioned earlier, this is in the historic district. Is there anything that you believe, they're trying to stay within the 35-foot limit of ridge, and that is, appears to be, and it's not well detailed, but it doesn't have to be at this point, is to be that extra roof height above the peaks you see is a bathtub for mechanicals.
Yeah.
Is there anything that you can recommend that might improve these roof lines, these gable ends? They're already boxed out, but they look very 1960s sitting in a historic district. Any thoughts on that to try and bring that more in line?
Well, that was a big part of the reason I wanted to walk around some more in the neighborhood. And it's interesting, right out in this parking lot, there's a building across the parking lot that has a line of those small gables. I think I would, I think an improvement would be, one is, and I mentioned it right at the beginning about the roof pitch, I think is a bit flat. That doesn't help. I think the roof pitch could be increased without increasing the ridge height by just lowering the eve end some to increase the roof pitch. And if you look at the detailing, actually, the two buildings down, there's a detailing that does a nice job of defining a triangle as opposed to it just being applied two pieces of trim. It's actually three. And, you know, I would suggest looking at that. I think it makes a little more of a classical look as opposed to maybe some that's a bit dated.
So by three, you're talking about the ridge?
There's a trim, that's right. The triangle is well defined.
So it's not just open at the bottom?
Correct. Yes. And in my world, that's, and actually, I did sketch exactly that when I was looking at the plans, which is why at the very beginning, I was asking about, let's see some street context. And I think that between that building, then there are one or two other gable-ended homes on Chancery Street as you go down. And I think kind of respecting those a little more, maybe a little more literally.
And relatively easy to accomplish.
I think so. Yeah, I think so.
Thank you.
I had two other questions.
Yeah.
The Amazon trucks.
Yeah.
I can't figure it out myself. I had, in renderings, we have someone's vehicle shown in four different parking spots. I don't know what it means.
Yeah. Well, I think what the proponent suggested, and I would suggest that your traffic department look at it, was that there is space on Chancery. I think they even, they submitted a diagram that showed an area where an Amazon-sized van could pull over outside of the traffic way. It's a legitimate concern. You know, it's 11 units, it's not 40 or 50, so it's not super regular, but having a plan in place and some level of confidence.
Especially at Christmas time when a lot of them and snow and, you know, you never know.
Well, that's true.
Is there a vestibule that's going to be able to hold all these packages? Where will they?
It's not, there is a vestibule off of Walker Street that is, I think it's sized sufficiently to have a package area and mail area. The plans aren't detailed enough at this point to show that. But generally speaking, having an area where you could train drivers to actually use that wouldn't inconvenience the public is a good idea.
Yeah, I was pretty concerned about that myself. I mean, I live on a street where there's only five houses in the winter, and it's every day. And it's only five, so I'm figuring it's going to be ballpark twice as much, never mind Christmas time.
Yeah, and there were comments, I think from the town about snow storage on the site. And I think that you'll probably have to ship the snow off.
I think they're expecting the town to do it. And then they're going to tackle, you know, walkways probably. I think, that's what I thought I read. I could be wrong.
That sounds right.
Yeah. And, because I mean, there's really no need to bring a plow in because town already has to go right by.
It's true. It's mainly street around there.
Yeah. Anyone else have any further questions? Go ahead, Mike.
Relative to the slope of the roof and the appeal, architectural appeal of the building, you know, we have a way where, because it's almost, as you can see with the, you know, the majority surface of the roof, this is almost like an architectural detail. And we're given leeway, I don't like to use it much myself, but, you know, cupolas and such. I mean, if we were to give them a waiver of a couple of feet, it would make a considerable difference in this, the appearance of this building.
I think it could.
And the appeal.
Yes.
And it would serve to, you know.
And I don't think it would put, oversize it.
No, I mean.
I agree with that. Because the reason, because the detail, I think with a detail that maybe is, fits in a little bit better, I think it kind of overrides any, certainly anything within another foot or two of impact, you know, from a shadow or even just overall scale issue. So I agree. To me, that wouldn't be a huge waiver.
No, especially when one were to weigh it, well, with the direction this Main Street's going, and I'm not a fan of it at all, but I mean, once this liberty green skyscraper is constructed, I mean, any potential waiver or whatever we would give, this building would be lost, you know, in that mass.
I think so. One thing, another thing I did want to bring up though, that we learned from the renderings, the street renderings, the view from Main Street looking down, there's a corner element on the building that is, it provides both some overhang for the entryway, but also kind of nails down the resident entry. And I did bring that up about rethinking some glazing or adding windows in the elevation. And Attorney Moynihan correctly wrote back that, well, there are restrictions on percentage of openings in a building. But I think I would maybe just push back a little bit on that, particularly on that view. I think that just having that blank wall, currently, they're showing it as a Borden Batten area. I think that's worth a little additional study because that is really the primary view you get of the building from Main Street.
From Main Street, yeah.
I think that's worth looking at. And I would say that there are, you know, you'd have to talk to the fire department, but, you know, you, there are sprinkler heads that are designed, that can be installed, deluge sprinklers that could allow you to exceed, although, keep in mind that the percentage that Attorney Moynihan pointed out is that's of the whole elevation. So if you can get three feet back, you can have openings in 15% of the elevation. So it's, you can get a lot of window in as long as you're that three feet back. But to me, I think it's worth looking at that. You know, the building in the foreground right before that has, is just nothing along that whole building on Walker Street. So having that then pop out again, which it does, and it really makes its presence known, I think, thinking a little more carefully about that tower. I appreciate the roof treatment, I think is nice, they're well-extended cornice line. Something that may be worth looking at, that it may fall within your realm is whether or not, and I don't know if they've looked at this or not, or whether that projection that they have, if, whether that in any way falls in the public realm, I don't know. I didn't, I, it may not, but anyway.
The other thing that you asked for that we haven't, I haven't seen one yet either, I want to see the traffic flow in that garage.
Yeah, and.
I think that's important.
That really is easy. The sweat pathing is literally a template that just gets applied.
I would like to see that myself.
And they're prepared. I appreciate their comment that they're going to design the structure of the building to accommodate the vehicular maneuverability. But it's such an easy thing. And, you know, again, I started from the point of wanting to make sure the neighbors felt comfortable that cars had the space to turn around. But I think it also just helps understand, give you a better understanding what, you know, what kind of structural issues you may get into if you're putting columns in funny places, you can really start to increase the structural costs. So knowing that upfront kind of helps everybody.
Did the three parking spaces on Glenwood, those were okay with you?
Well, those are the ones that I was mainly talking about. I've seen the maneuverability.
They're okay.
Chancery is much wider.
Yeah.
And there isn't, you know, there's no building there that you could back into.
Okay. Go ahead, Tony.
One last question. To the best of my knowledge, with regard to dark sky lighting, which this building will have, in the historic district, that's a difficult thing to do, and I'm not sure that our historic commission has fully grappled with that. Do you have any recommendations for dark skyline that might fit on this building? That would fit into an historic district?
Well, that's interesting. So you mean the fixture design itself? Well, for example, their overhang, first of all, they may not need all that much light. I actually don't recall how many streetlights there are out there anyway. So you certainly don't want to unnecessarily introduce light that's already meeting minimum illumination levels. But for example, at the entryway, there's already an overhang at that tower entryway. So having downlights in there would be potentially fully dark sky compliant. And I think I would argue that pretty much anywhere else, and maybe when you're not on a prominent facade at all, you know, for example, along Glenwood, just simple shielded building-mounted lighting, as few as possible just to maintain, you know, a safe, secure walkway. But that's usually the easiest is, you know, just shielded building mounted can be very easily dark sky compliant.
Thank you.
Nick, you all set?
I got a question. I apologize if it's been covered, but in trash room on the corner, has it been addressed like that the trash guy will be able to get on that corner? Is he going to get out his truck, push the dumpsters out? Because I know there's an issue in apartments all the time, it's always overlooked. And next thing you know, they had to put them somewhere where they never planned, maybe in those parking spots.
Well, that goes along with the, what I requested in my letter was a trash management plan that, you know, describes how residents get the trash to the trash room, then how it gets picked up, and is there a private trash picker, whatever the sort of choreography is of the truck coming in, lifting it up, how long would it need to be there? There was some language provided, but, you know, I don't, I just don't know how it happens on that street already. It may just be another stop on Chancery, and they go down the street and come out the city hall parking lot. I don't know, but.
Sometimes the trash guy, I can't get that dumpster, so they don't stop, and then you have to put the dumpsters on the outside of the building, and now they're, everyone wants to see them, and then people start complaining because they're not inside. I was just curious, because I know, you know, it looks like 11 units, a lot of trash, and someone's got to go in, push them out to the middle of the street, back a big truck in.
Well, and something I don't know, and it may be that I just, you know, I was sticking with the architectural documentation, but I, generally, if there's a management, I'm guessing there's going to be a management company, a property management company, and I'm guessing that it's probably a private pickup, probably. So knowing that how they schedule that, they won't have the truck come at 5:00 in the morning, you know, just basics like that are just, in my opinion, just comforting for the neighborhood to know how this building won't become an imposition.
I think it's barrels, not a dumpster. That's what I read, anyway.
I think it says two-yard dumpsters. They're probably rollable.
Dumpster, okay. I thought it said barrels.
Yeah, two, ones for recycling, ones for trash. So you'd expect to have a scheduled.
A trash manager, just like you said, trash management plan.
Yeah.
Got anything else, Mike?
Yeah, I just want, I mean, when you look at this AV4, you know, the north side of the building, looking down Walker Street, I mean, the places in front of it are just so bland that I really think that tower and that it's screaming for, if not a window, at least some kind of detail. It's, I don't know, just something to consider. I think it's.
I think it would help a lot.
Bland is being generous, but something, I mean, a couple of windows would be great, but if it's not allowable, I mean, some other detail, minor, at least to break that up more than Borden Batten does, because it just, the blah kind of flows right down, halfway down the street for one of them, term.
Anybody else have any further questions up here?
No.
We all set?
Yeah.
Thank you very much. It was great.
We're very.
Yeah, and it was a great report. We appreciate it.
Would you like me to summarize just tidbits of architectural, small?
Sure, just a quick.
Points? Does that make sense?
That would be good, yeah. We'll utilize it, I'm sure.
Okay.
I have too much information.
Never enough info, that's correct.
All right.
So this hearing, the Walker Street hearing, is continued till October 17th?
Sheriff, you should be.
Oh, sure. Thank you again, sir.
Just a few points, you know, on.
Just a few points, you know, on the, on the details that Mr. Boomer discussed, the security grades on the building, you know, the materials, you know, switching out for the, looking at the shingle and clapboard instead of the Borden-Batten, I mean, those would not be wood, but we can look at those more artificial changes. Couple of comments, that things that I think are more difficult than presented. So the unit that's on Walker Street, you know, having that as commercial space or common space, that might be ideal, but it does mean losing an apartment unit. Here you have four affordable units being proposed, so if the, first of all, wouldn't, I don't think, be commercial space because it's not a very big space, there's not sufficient parking on site for commercial uses. Then you have a new parking requirement, right, if you're adding in more commercial space. So given the situation we're in with the housing crisis, we think that utilizing it as a residential apartment is the right treatment for it. So I'd just like you to, to keep that in mind. Giving it up to common space, giving up an apartment unit downtown, I just don't think is a good solution, where we're at with our housing problem. As far as the walkways go, again, I tried to stress this in my letter, yes, we'd all like to see, you know, sidewalks and different things, but we have to keep in mind of what the existing conditions are out there. There is no sidewalk. Now you have cars going into the site in various locations, off Walker Street, off Chancery, and off Glenwood. So you, if you're walking along Walker Street, south down Walker Street, the existing condition is that you could have cars crossing into the pedestrian path. This project eliminates that. So when we look at the existing condition versus the improved, versus the proposed condition, you're shaking your head, Mr. Duffy, what I'm getting at is that when you're walking down Walker Street, south, right now, there are cars coming in off of Walker into the site. So if you're a pedestrian, you have potential intersection, intersection with vehicles as you're walking down Walker. The project improves that condition. We don't have control over the townway in terms of what the town can or cannot do about sidewalks. As far as the swept path analysis, it isn't really an easy thing. We don't, we have not been able to locate a standard for a parking garage to apply. So we've tried to give you visuals, we've given you distances, we've tried to show you that it's an improvement over the existing condition, which right now has five parking spaces going in and out of Glenwood, and we're reducing that down to three. We'll do our best to address that further, but I just want to make you aware that it is not an easy thing to do. And as you know, the applicant actually owns the building across Glenwood. So at present time, that is not a concern in terms of, of that situation. Again, things like the power lines, transformers, construction management plans, we're getting into the minutia here, which can be, as Mr. Boomer has agreed, appropriately conditioned by the zoning board of appeals. And the package delivery, I just ask you to keep in mind, this is a property that's in the business district. Right now, you have commercial usage of the property, you have package delivery all over the downtown area. It's very difficult to compare this loading zone area that we've shown you can be easily used on Chancery to a situation that it doesn't better what's going on down there. So if you look at the town hall parking, or the parking lot behind 200 Main Street, if you look at other areas of downtown, you have a loading area, loading areas that are happening in the streets. That's what's happening all around town. We've shown you a location here on a sketch where there is ample pull-off area for a UPS truck, an Amazon truck, et cetera. So I think you have to compare that to commercial uses on the site as well, and what may or may not be happening with delivery. The lighting we can look at, it's not an issue. We can, Evan is here, our architect, he said that lowering or changing the pitch of the roof at the current design would mean bringing down the window levels. So if the board does not have objection, we can show a change on the plans that is accounting for an increased height of a couple of feet, and bring that back to you, so you can see what that difference would be. Okay? That would mean requesting a height waiver, obviously, but if that's the, if that is how majority of the board is inclined to go, we can certainly make that change and show you how that would, how that would work. Thank you for my comments.
Mark has one quick I think that it wouldn't be too much of a stretch to, to consider that roof, especially in the design, and there's a flat roof behind it, to consider that an architectural detail. And I don't, it's my personal feeling that two feet was going to make a hell of a difference in the appearance of the building, and a hell of an improvement. And, I mean, it wouldn't really be that difficult for you to, you know, project that to us and, you know, run it up the pole, see how it flies. But I can tell you from where I stand right now, I would certainly be in favor of that, especially in light of what's happening to Main Street anyhow. That's just my opinion at the moment, but I mean, I, I think it could significantly improve the appearance, a hell of a lot more than two feet would indicate, and I think the, our peer would agree with that as well.
Okay, thank you for that.
We're continuing this till October 17th?
And I have just one other little
Yep.
Now, as far as you said you couldn't find a template or a standard or whatever to
From a parking garage.
Yeah, I mean, and I just had, couldn't you just temporarily mark it out on the street and literally try it with a vehicle and, you know, tell us what you came up with?
Well, we have, I mean, we did field test it, we have a video, we could show you, we can show
So you've already done that?
We can show, we have the pictures that I filed for you, or clips from a video. We can also show a turning movement coming out of the parking garage that is at the width of a parking, typical parking space, 16 feet, you know, coming out, 15 feet, whatever that is, to show you that the, I mean, I drove the vehicle, so I know it, I know it works. I was
She's here today.
You know, I know, I know it works. So yes, we will work on that for you.
That'd be good.
All right. Okay.
Will you make a motion for me, Frank, to continue to October?
Continue to October 17th.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to continue to October 17th. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? None?
Thanks very much.
Thank you again, sir. All right, so now we have Scott McCann, right?
He's here. There he is.
There he is. Couldn't see him back there. Sorry.
Who's everybody?
We're good.
Scott?
Forty B night.
I just did a little quick PowerPoint because it helps me describe things. So Noreen and I were talking about the wacky world of Title V and where it's gone.
Can I just explain to the public, this is the town's health agent, and we had a few questions for him, and this is a moment where he's available for us to ask any questions.
I'll talk while I, while I go. So I'm sure you're having, you're struggling with it a little bit. To give you an example, today, I had a nice couple come in and ask about their septic system. It was a 45-minute conversation. Every time there's a real estate transaction, it's a 45-minute conversation between the two buyers' agent, listing agent, and the potential owner. Because no one knows exactly what they need to do. And so to think that the board necessarily is going to know exactly what to do every time, it's tricky. So I named this the Land of Confusion, which is from Genesis 1986. Anybody under 40 wouldn't necessarily know that, but it is extremely confusing right now. So I want to start at the beginning, to give everybody an idea. I noticed a new board member and maybe, you know, people that aren't really used to it. So let's do a five-minute that. Back in 2003, DEP did what they call a MEEP study, which considered all our coastal ponds, which is like Born's Pond, Green Pond, Wacoit Bay, Wild Harbor, so on and so forth, there's 14 of them in Falmouth, which is 40% of the Cape. So 40% of all watersheds are located in Falmouth, which makes this much more complicated. So what they did is they determined what they call TMDL, total maximum daily load of nitrogen going into each of these coastal ponds, and did nothing with it from 2003-ish till 2023. With some pressure from people like the Buzzes Bay Coalition, the Conservation Law Foundation, came down with a regulation in July that went into effect in July of 2023, which gave towns two choices to clean up their impaired watersheds. Option one was everybody puts in a denitrifying septic system in seven years, which means about 13,000 to 14,000 houses would be ripping up their yachts to put in denitrifying septic systems. Option one. Option two is, which I've circled, is what the town chose, is to do watershed permitting. Gives us more time, more flexibility, allows to add sewer, shellfish beds, widening of inlets, and a bunch of different mechanisms to get DEP to agree that we are meeting that TMDL. So essentially, our nitrogen's here, it needs to get to here. And it's essentially a math test, is the amount of kilograms associated per bedroom or per household, and it needs to get down to a certain level. So we have some searing, and I'll get into that in a second, but, you know, let's talk about the enhanced nitrogen removal, because that's really what you have to grapple with in your decisions. What is it, first and foremost? Everybody has a septic system, well, everybody, just about everybody. And that septic system is on a 1995 regulation, version of Title V, which is essentially a septic tank, distribution box, and leach field. What a denitrification, enhanced nitrogen removal, also called IA, you see these terms used interchangeably, essentially takes nitrogen, ammonia, in the form of nitrogen primarily from urine, and converts it to nitrogen gas, it just goes up in the environment. It has to first nitrify, be oxygenated, and then denitrified in an anaerobic, non-oxygen state. So early septic systems were, the number that you may have heard of before is 19 milligrams per liter, was a number used for a long time. The older systems were designed, and the regulation was originally designed, to protect wellheads, private wells and town wells, drinking water wells. And so when they looked at this in 1995, the influent coming out, the effluent coming out of the house was roughly around 38 milligrams per liter. As long as you got half, which is 19, this is where the 19 number came from, you were fine. But that's what the system was. So I call sometimes the IA, especially the older ones, are a square peg in a round hole. They were essentially designed for wastewater standards and a 50% reduction, which they do a very good job. However, since 1995, we've gone to low-flow devices. So the actual effluent coming out of all of our homes is somewhere between 60 and 100, with 60 and 70 being an average. Now, you take half of that out, and you're running in the 25 to 35 range, which is still okay for drinking water, because it's still okay for drinking water. And plus, Falmouth, we may only have 200 drinking wells and some town wells, and it's a whole separate part of the regulation. But these systems aren't running at 2, 3, 4, 5, 8, 10 milligrams per liter. So more, so what's happened is, is with this new regulation, DEP has given a new set of approvals called, I call them BATS, best available technologies, there's an N in nitrogen-reducing technologies, I call them BATS. They need to be less than 10, 12 milligrams per liter. So when you, as a board, require D-Nite systems, our Board of Health has a local regulation that says 12 milligrams per liter, so we're going to make anybody meet 12. However, there's really one, there's two systems that can achieve 12. One is not sold to single-family dwellings or residences, the engineer does not sell them that way, and one will. So right now, we have one promising technology that runs consistently under 12 milligrams per liter, which is a problem if we have to put thousands of these things in, right? So there's, there's an issue there. But that's what an IA system does. It essentially bubbles and oxygenates the wastewater, and then causes pneumonia, causes ammonia to turn into nitrates and nitrates, which then, when it goes into an anaerobic environment, the oxygen gets grabbed from the, the bacteria starving for oxygen, and then the nitrogen goes up as a gas. And so you, as a board, have a lot of nitrogen-sensitive areas. Anybody who's looking at this, everybody in green is in a nitrogen-sensitive area, which is a lot of North Falmouth, some of West Falmouth, and pretty much from the high school west. You're all in, all 14,000 or whatever other homes are. So we have to do plans for 14 watersheds and encompass 14,000 homes. Okay? So one of the things, one of the ways that you can do it is searing, which would be lovely if we had everybody on sewer, but we don't. This confusing map, all in the horizontal, the stripes, the diagonal stripes are nitrogen-sensitive areas. Where our sewers are are very, very small, some in Woods Hole, a little one up in North Falmouth, up in New Silver Beach, some around Maravista and Heights, and here downtown, going to McDonald's. The big gray arrow is where we'd like to sewer, and hopefully we get there someday. But we don't know that, which makes these plans extremely complicated, because we don't know how much sewer we're going to afford, how much sewer we can. And the reason why I showed this is up in the West Falmouth, you see the orange circle. That orange circle is our treatment plant. If we inject wastewater coming all the way from Wacoit, taking care of all our peninsulas, and shoot it into the ground, even if we, even though we have one of the best performing nitrogen-reducing plants in the state, it's still a lot of, if you put a million gallons and you take out 97%, that's still a boatload of nitrogen, right? Because it's a lot of gallons. And so we're not going to get a permit to just expand the sewer and inject it in the ground. So things like, you hear about outfall pipe, treat it to a tertiary, get it to almost drinking water standards, and shoot it out in the ocean, is one solution. So we don't know the future, and we're not going to know how many denitrifying, denitrifying septic systems we're necessarily going to need, and we don't know how much sewer we're going to be able to buy. So here's the rub, we don't have the plans done yet. Now, Water Quality Management Committee is one really working on, on this, and they're coming up with, this is a new one from like a month ago, this is the Wild Harbor proposed geo-boundary, and those highlighted in light blue would be those that would need the denitrification systems, we don't have sewer available. So we're doing, they're doing this 14 times over on each watershed. And when you get to Great Pond, which essentially goes from 151 all the way down to Davis, down to Acapescot, that's a long run. And going back up to this, that whole Great Pond is one giant watershed, right there. I don't know if I got the cursor on it, right here. So there's a lot of complicating things that need to occur. As time progresses, this is sort of the flux time, as time progresses and these watershed are defined, and they're also going to have to account for future expansion, right? So, so lots that aren't developed or lots that are going to be expanded upon have to be considered in this plan, because if you only, if you, for example, have 10,000 kilograms in this watershed per year, and you grow by 10%, you now have, you know, whatever, 11, whatever, you have more, you have much more nitrogen. So essentially, the plans are in development. Then they have to come to the Board of Health. The Board of Health is the regulatory authority for septic systems. Okay? So the board would have to adopt these geo-boundaries and enforce the installation of D-Nite systems where they, these denitrification systems where they're needed. So as a board, later on, you'll start having these maps, and you can sort of look at the maps, and that might help you in your decision-making on whether you want them, but they're not done. And you're sort of in that middle. And this, hence the reason why I'm personally having very lengthy conversations with residents, because it is complicated, they have decisions they have to make. A couple of, so where we are now is essentially our local requirement, currently, if you're in a watershed, the Board of Health, as, as our regulation, you have to be able to accommodate it in your plan. So any septic system being designed in a watershed right now, they have to show where they can put a new one. I mean, sorry, an IA system. Both vertically, because this thing's now probably going to come out the septic tank, go into this thing and come out, there's some pitch that needs to work, there also needs to be some real estate set aside. So the engineers are now designing this for, for that to happen. That's where we are now. Now, in the future, to accommodate, as these geo-boundaries get made, we'll all new construction. Now, I, what I mean by new construction with the, with Title V is any increases in flow, which would be brand-new house or house adding a bedroom or a room that we call a bedroom. I hope that you get a lot out of the referrals that I give, but your referrals are very complicated, right? So you have dens, office studies, sewing rooms, wrapping rooms, I saw a wrapping room.
We had a wrapping room.
So a wrapping room a couple of months ago.
We did.
So you see all kinds of rooms, but if it's bigger than 70 square feet, private with a window, it's, it's a bedroom in Title V. So new construction may in the future, or the near future, need to require IAs if they fall into these, these watersheds. So that's, you know, one of the things that we need to look at. So the reason why it's confusing for you guys, and it's hard for me to give you, you know, sometimes a referral, is I don't know what the future's going to hold for that particular property, per se. Okay? You know, the You know, the hard ones for me, it's, it's, to me, it's easier, going back to this map, is we're going to have less ability to sewer North Falmouth than we may have south of 28, right? So I can say, you know, reasonably see coast shores if it's something, then I can see sewer in the future. You know, it's not, obviously, we've got to go to town meeting and get it voted for, money appropriated, and things of that nature. You know, where we're going to have mostly IAs, Rans Canal, where we might need, I don't know, making up the number, 78 homes have to have it in order to meet the watershed permit. That's a lot easier. So it's confusing for all, because we're not at a point where all the plans are developed. Okay? So that was my little spiel to start. I know you guys might have a lot of questions, so I hope that was helpful.
It was. Go ahead, Mark.
Can you go back to, or forward to the one that had the blue?
Yep.
Now, what is that blue?
Okay, so, so essentially, the ones in the blue would be targeted for needing them to meet the watershed permit. The ones in red are non-developed, you know, 300 committee or some sort of conservation restriction. And those that are pink, you don't see very many of them, already have the IA system.
Oh.
Okay, so, you know, if you look at that watershed, for example, I forget the name of the brook, the southern part, that, that's probably more impaired than the bay itself. So you see more of the IAs over in that area.
Herring Brook?
Yeah, Herring Brook, I think, I forget the name of it.
Yeah.
And you see the bare patch is already sewed, that's the New Silver Beach, and that was done because groundwater is about a foot and a half down, you really couldn't put a septic in to begin with. So that's just the first iteration, that's not done locked in, right? So that is the first attempt by Water Quality Management to sort of think about this. And then eventually, when they're finalized, the Board of Health will have to adopt them, or not. But if they want to meet the permit, they will.
In that, say there were something like a 40B put into that area, it could expand that blue area.
Correct. So you have to account for increases in the future. And that might be that all increases in flow.
Possible.
Well, I think you need to fluff it, right? So you need to add enough homes to account for it at the beginning, and then you would require all, you know, an IA technology for new construction. That's why I said in the other slide, I said in the future, you know, new construction may need to have it, all increases in flow, because yes, there's X bedrooms. There's 26,317 bedrooms worth of nitrogen credit in this watershed. If you go to 30, that changes your plan. And you're probably going to have a requirement, and I'll be long retired, you know, when the plans are finally done, and you have to go back to your plan and redo your plan. You have to update your plans on a routine basis to accommodate future growth. That'll have to be done.
One more thing.
Sure.
I'm going to put you on the spot, but you've known me a long time, you're used to it.
I enjoy it.
What do you think of the potential of urine diversion?
Well, that would be, okay, so I didn't get into that, because, you know, again, topics I was trying to be talking about. I look at it as another IA system.
I do too.
If all the urine, so these are great, like, the best one takes out 90%. Well, if you're going, if it's going into a black water, which is a system where the urine actually goes into a holding tank, you're taking out a high percentage. Now, not all your nitrogen coming out of your house is just urine, but the large percentage.
Like 70-plus.
Yeah, so everything that would go in there, whether it went into a urine diversion, and it may be a composting, whatever, the system or black water, which is just essentially, you would have two pipes coming out of your toilet, and then one would go to the urine, you know, you would have this baffle thing or whatever, you know, that ends up being in the future, is now what they're trying to do, and the reason why they had that article was to make that an equivalency to an IA. It's one of the IAs you choose off the shelf. So you choose, I wish I designed Scott's denitrifying septic system, I wouldn't be here if I made one, I'd be making a lot more. But like, let's say I come up with the greatest idea, and urine diversion's another one you take off the shelf, or a Microfast, or a Nitro, and that's the way I would look at, I'm looking at urine diversion.
And it's potential to be so much cheaper.
Yep. Yeah, well, that's decisions that have to be made in the future, right? So we just, how, what the, what the watershed plans allowed us to do by choosing the plans gives us the flex, gives the town the flexibility to make the decisions on how they want to get there. Right? So theoretically, it could be all urine diversion, it could be all, you know, you know, the denitrification systems, I, I think, now that we have one really good one, that's really showing promise, it's only about four, five years old, is that the other technologies that are older now know that they have a line that they have to get to.
Catch up.
And they'll catch up. And so I've talked to a few at conferences and so forth, and they're working on making their systems better. The more options the residents get, I think, is the better. And then there's a whole economic thing that needs to be built in and things of that nature, and how are we going to do it? I don't know how the engineers are going to pop out of the woodwork. They're getting a little older too, and there's not a lot of kids getting into it, and I don't know how this is all going to happen, and it's going to happen over a long period of time. So, so when I do my referrals, it's, it's hard, you know, the referrals are more complicated, everything's just more complicated because of the new regs.
Frank, do you have any questions?
Yeah, thank you for coming, Scott. Given, we understand that an IA system may be something that we would, that at least somebody would like to have. But are there any areas of town where currently they are required?
So no. So Title V only required them in order to have more bedrooms, if you had a well on your property, or you were in a Zone 2, which is near a town well. So that has been in place since 1995. It allows you to go to one bedroom per 10,000 square feet, or four bedrooms, four bedrooms per acre, to six bedrooms per acre if you put in the denitrifying technology. Now, the areas of requiring it for environmental purposes, nitrogen remediation, and the reason why this new regulation, there aren't areas established quite yet that says you need them. That's what the blue map is. Whereas we do these geo-boundaries, these are the ones that are going to take each 14 watersheds and pick the parts of town that you'd need them.
Right, but that's in the future, right?
Correct. There is nothing currently that says you're in a denitrifying septic system area.
So, but if you live in the blue.
Yep.
And you're building a new house, or substantially remodeling an existing house, it probably would be worth your while to think anyways about putting an IA system in, because you can do it now rather than pay to convert later.
Correct. So the thing is, is that these blue, this, this map is brand-new. It's a couple of weeks old, and it hasn't been vetted yet. It'll make it a lot easier for the homeowner, but the, the thing I told you today, the 45-minute conversation, was because someone was thinking about replacing their septic system in this watershed. It's why I chose this one, because I was talking to somebody about it. And they want to replace their septic, and their options are replace their septic, and maybe I get, you get a letter from me three years from now and says, after you finish putting your yard back together three years later, go back out now and put that D-Nite system in, which we have room for according to the plan that we did a couple of years ago. Or you do it now. Now, is the map, the problem is, is that the map may change a little bit. I said it was doubtful where they were located, because they were smack dab in the middle of it, but things may change, right? And so these maps are going to change, I think, because we just don't know without an outfall pipe and how much sewer we're going to buy, you know, some, some I think are reasonably known, especially up in North, we'd be searing, but it gets real complicated, especially south, where, let's use Davisville Road, anything in the Davisville or Central Ave. I don't know when that's getting sewed, right? And I don't know, so are we going to make people put in, we have to have a map with a plan. If we don't have a plan, I don't, I don't want residents throwing in denitrifying septic systems in 2030 to rip them out in 2037 to tie into the sewer, right? We should have a plan that kind of figures all that out, and that, luckily, I don't have to do that plan. That's Water Quality Management.
How much space, how much space would you reserve, say?
Good question.
For an IA system? How much more space does one than a Title V?
Good question. The two main ones are either, you have to replace the tank, because a lot of them are built into a special tank. Going back to this image up here, up in the top corner that says Microfast, that's a, that's your septic tank with that thing, it's a giant thing in this area here, that is the unit. So you just replace the tank. This one here is the size of a 1,500 to a 2,000-gallon tank. So what the board did is saying, since the one you'd have to replace would have to take the tank out, you don't need more real estate for that. The one that you come out is the Nitro, is the one down here, is the size roughly of a 2,000-gallon tank. So that's what the board went with. Six inches of extra pitch coming from the septic tank to the leach, to the distribution box, to allow for coming out to, let's say, a Nitro and going back into the D-box from there, and the room, the size of a 2,000-gallon septic tank. We call it an IA, an IA reserve area. We've reserved it. And that way, we can plug them in later, and we'll have to go back to an engineer to do it, per se. Well, we probably need some engineering, because somebody has to spec out the denitrification.
What is the square footage of this reserved area, then?
Well, it's the size of a 2,000-gallon tank, so I don't know the size of a 2,000-gallon tank, two, two, no, eight by, I don't know, eight by 16?
16 or so.
Seven by 12.
Seven by 12? That was off. I don't remember the dimensions.
Plus the space to work and...
Well, you just need it on the plan. Yes, they're going to be digging up, you know, if it's in your backyard, unfortunately, I've done 3,872 septic inspections in my life. If it's, you know, if it's in your backyard, you have to go back there with a machine, so the death and destruction in your yard starts at the street and goes all the way to the backyard, right? So there's that whole thing that occurs when someone's digging a giant hole with a big excavator. Yes, that's, there are, I wish one day we'd have a company, maybe that'll happen, where you can retrofit it inside an existing tank, but that technology right now isn't there.
All right. Thank you.
Anybody done this? Antoni, you have a question?
I have a quick question. Yes, I'm definitely confused, there's no question of that.
Yep.
But what I want to try and understand is, before a builder or developer ever gets to you with regard to their septic design, this board has to consider and coastal pond only history, Section 247.2B, Paragraph 3, which says that any subdivision with more than five lots, more than five acres, must perform an analysis of how much nitrogen they're going to shed into a watershed area. So this is all happening before it ever gets to you. And then earlier, you said that I think that you're requiring IA systems to go 12 milligrams per liter, because that's the best they can really do at this point in time. But yet, this board and the planning board, for that matter of fact, according to this bylaw, can actually turn a developer down if their analysis indicates that they're shedding more into the watershed area and don't have a means of reducing it. Now, I'm not reading every line here. This bylaw, as confusing as it is. So before any developer gets to you, this board may have already denied them a permit. What happens? And that's the part that confuses me. Our job is to look at this analysis according to 7.2B, Paragraph 3, so forth and so forth and so on. And in fact, we could say, based on that analysis, because we're the only ones that can say no, or planning board as well, but it never gets to you. Are we doing a disfavor to the developer by not letting them get to you first? Or should they be going to you first with the analysis?
I'm not familiar with your bylaw, but you're saying zero discharge of nitrogen beyond the property line. Is that what you're essentially saying?
It does not say that precisely, which is part of the confusion. It just says they have to do an analysis.
Oh, okay.
Which talks about adding to the nitrogen load. It gets very detailed. But the question is this, should the developer be going to you first? Say, look, this is what we want to do over here. Here's our analysis that we're going to show the zoning board or the planning board, and it's going to actually add more, more nitrogen load, whatever that nitrogen load is, and then come back to us before, well, before they ever get to us, with a recommendation from you based on their analysis.
You certainly could do that. I can't think of a project that would not increase nitrogen.
But that's what this bylaw talks about.
There is no, I mean, that's zero discharge. I mean, you're not, you would, I don't understand, any residential or commercial flow that would end up being zero, even if you put the best denitrifying septic system on the planet.
This is what we're, we're...
Yeah, well, I think, yeah, so that's a tough bylaw.
Yeah.
I think, this is what, this is my dream. This is my dream. Once this, once this gets clicked on, our watershed permits are in play. All zoning and ZBA zoning, planning board requirements, because most of our, most of our D-Nites in town are because of the four-lot subdivision requirement and planning board. I would say 80%. So instead of having them around coastal ponds, we have them sitting over there next to Falmouth Country Club, because Eagle Drive and Putter Lane fell into that, which makes no sense to me. I think I would have rather have seen them be more focused. But that being said, all these should go away once we have a master plan. The problem is, is we don't have a master plan. We have a planning board that has, you know, if you're in a water resource, you can only have 7.5 gallons per 1,000 square feet, and then you have yours, which kind of, to me, not reading it, sounds like you can't have any discharge, you know? If they, if you want referrals from me...
You can't have additional discharge.
Additional discharge. So that's no increase in flow. Well, if you have, you see vacant lots all the time.
I know.
Well, so...
Kind of puts us in a difficult spot.
Yeah, I think my advice to you is, you know, what we did for you, essentially what the Board of Health did for the boards, was saying, and they did it a couple of years ago in the Board of Health regs, is saying, look, if any other board, it's basically what it says, any other board says they needed, you need D-Nite, planning being number one, you being number two, sometimes conservation is a trade-off between, you know, whatever. You have to have 12, because 12 is really the best available technology, and that's milligrams per liter, so that's the lowest concentration. So doesn't matter what happens here, if they come to us with a D-Nite, we want 12. We don't want 19. 19, so what 19 does is make that bigger by 40%, right? Again, if you're getting 12, you need that many homes. That's assumption of 10 to 12. That's what the blue, now 19, color it all in. Does that make sense? So it's going to allow us to have to do less denitrification systems if they run better. But I don't really have a good answer for you on that.
Thank you, though. Thank you very much.
Nick, do you have any questions?
I do not.
I got one more.
Go ahead.
Again, for my own edification on this diagram.
Yep.
That's obviously 28A. Just to plot it, can you point out, sir, name some street there so I can know where to, how about this round thing in the, in the bottom right corner? Way down in the bottom right corner. What street is that?
Uh, where are we?
All the way down the bottom right corner.
Yeah, I'm looking.
He's trying to figure out where he is.
I know where I am, because this is, right here is Curly Boulevard. That is, so this is like Trickett Lane, you know, those lanes. This is that, I call that weird sort of like roundabout.
Yeah.
Rotary, where Curly Boulevard is. It's the two streets before that. I don't remember.
I think it's Althea is one of them.
Yeah. And there's one that changes names, it starts as Trickett and then changes its name when it goes further up the street.
Yeah, yeah.
So on this plan, one side of Curly Boulevard is in and one side is out.
Yeah. Yeah, no, it, well, look at the waterfront. So everybody, this is the first question I get, why do the rich people on the waterfront not have to do, well, because their groundwater, their wastewater goes right out to sea. We're not worrying about nitrogen in the open ocean, we're worried about nitrogen in these, in this thing here.
No drinking water.
Right? So, so that's why the last houses on Maravista are not sewed. That's why, right? And that's why part of the heights is not sewed. It's because their groundwater was not going into Little Pond. Okay? It's where your water's flowing by groundwater. Groundwater, interestingly, if you think of how the groundwater flows, this is a good reference, think of the top of the base. So in Sandwich, it goes from the base north. In Bourne, it kind of goes due west. Here, it kind of goes southwest. As you get towards Wacoit, it's due south. As you go towards Mashpee, it's southeast.
And that's all driven by the elevation?
So, so, out, water pushing down that way, so groundwater flows in the, basically southwest from most of ours. This is, this one being in West Falmouth is much more of a westerly flow. It does sort of tail up a little bit. Yeah.
I didn't, I didn't hear, I didn't understand. Did you say you're not concerned about the nitrogen flow into the ocean?
Correct.
No.
But the nitrogen flow into freshwater?
Yeah, no, okay, so let me explain. So, so, well, freshwater is a whole nother animal. There are no technologies that remove phosphorus. Phosphorus is the main nutrient that we worry about for the cyanobacteria blooms and water quality of fresh ponds. Whole nother animal needs to be dealt with individually. That's why I happen to personally like sewer, because if we throw in thousands of these nitrogen removers and we try, now we have a technology that can solve freshwater and phosphorus, we're going to make everybody go back and add something else. If it was all at the treatment plant, we buy the one thing at the treatment plant, throw it on there, and have a great old day and get rid of the phosphorus. So that's my personal opinion about that. But no. So if you look at this one map right over here, these homes don't flow backwards into this salt pond. When I call ponds as coastal or embankments, they're salt water. And any type of salt water inlet. So a good example is, you have Little Pond here with the cursor, you have Great Pond, there's a Green Bourne's, all that, Wacoit Bay. Then you've got up in here, you've got Rans Canal, you've got, you know, the new, the old Silver area, you've got a couple more up here. And so these are all because you're saving that, 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 this one here, Wacoit Bay, West Falmouth Harbor, there's also Oyster Paw, Oyster and Quistet Harbor. I think, and I was surprised that Sippawisset Marsh was not included in this at this point in time. Maybe it's not considered impaired. I wouldn't be surprised if you see this swath kind of come up over here like this for another one, maybe in the future. Inner harbors, one as well. So you're protecting these inlets. That's the reason why none of this area is considered, this area here, Sippwisset Road is not considered nitrogen sensitive, is because the groundwater flows out to the open water body. It's about where the groundwater flows, in what direction the groundwater flows into. And if it flows into, take a drive, the greatest example is, take the drive down T Ticket path where the tip of Little Pond is. That water is very muddy, dirty, doesn't see a lot of flow, not a lot of tidal flow. Those are the places that get hit, beat up the worst by the constant flow of nitrogen from the various sources of nitrogen. Whereas the open ocean, for not current, that thing's just going, the nitrogen that you put in there today will be going through the canal tomorrow. I mean, the water moves that fast out there, so.
Makes sense.
And the reason why an outfall pipe works. If you're only throwing nitrogen and some nutrients into the open ocean and you had an outfall pipe, it's not going to hurt anything, because it's solution by dilution at that point.
Another.
Yep.
Is urine diversion does capture the phosphorus.
Well, yes. So things like that will capture all of it. Right? So, yes, if nothing goes in the system, that's, that's one way of definitely doing it. You know, you just have the, you know, the thing about that is you'll have to do it internally in the house. Most of the work would be done in the house because of the repiping and, you know, ripping out the walls and adding a second line to go somewhere else.
The, again, the map with the blue.
Yep.
Is, is there a map east of that yet?
I've got a few maps. The best thing to do is that, Water Quality Manager's making the maps. But I, whatever ones I have, I'll share with you. They haven't done them all. I think we've done most of the North Falmouth ones. The most complicated one's Great Pond, due to the size of Great Pond watershed. But the maps aren't, like I said, set in stone. There'd be, there's discussion items at Water Quality Management. When Water Quality Management thinks they're done, they don't have any regulatory authority, it all falls with the Board of Health. They would come to the Board of Health, and the Board of Health would make a decision on whether to adopt the map and change its local regulation to require denitrification systems. But there's a lot that needs to happen. I mean, how's the money going to do? Do we have things set up for residents financially for these? Right? There's a lot that needs to go on, and it's a big, heavy lift on these, and, you know, it doesn't help you today. It's not going to help your decisions today. I just hope, you know, feedback is, what do you want to see in my referrals that you may not be getting? Is there anything you, because I try, I do spend, you know, a fair amount of time trying to give you a decent referral on the Title V part. And a lot of times you'll see lately is, they might need a D night later, have good luck to that. That's kind of what I've been telling you in a nice way. But if you need any feedback, you know, let Norrie know. I mean, because it's important that you get decent feedback on each project.
No, in the very near future, there are going to be other shoes dropping from the state level as well.
Meaning?
Well, you know, asking for D night systems in greater areas than they are now, I mean, that's, that's not that far in the future, is it?
No, I, you know, I don't know how this is all going to fall timeline-wise yet. I just don't know. I mean, we're probably going to be in watershed at a time. Look, you can make it all now, but who's putting in 15,000 septics? Okay, so Falmouth, on a good year, we might do 550 septic permits. Everything from sewer line, a line going to a tank to a brand-new replacement. You put, you need 4,000 a year. I don't know how I'm doing that. You know, I don't know who's putting them in, who's designing them. I mean, so I think you're probably better off trying to tackle one watershed at a time and trying to get them upgraded. But, you know, again, you only have one technology that's getting less than 12, that's readily available, you know, urine diversion's still in its infancy. So, you know, rushing to get these done is also a tricky thing, because, I don't know, you know, Mashpee's taking a different approach. They're, they just want a lot of IAs. They're getting a lot of 19 units, the units that get 19, the older stuff, because they're cheaper, they half the cost, actually, they're almost a third of the cost. I think a new, a new, the older systems might be 12, 15,000. You know, to buy the best technology just to buy it's in the 30s. Right? So people are going to normally opt for the least expensive one, but they don't take out a lot of nitrogen, some of them, or as much as the other one. And so now you might have a lot of these you've rushed into, right? So I like, I like doing the plan right, doing it once, and then, you know, doing the watershed at that point.
We're, this board is in a particularly uncomfortable position, because we're tasked with a lot of 40Bs. And, and we have to consider the future of those who own the affordable units. Because, you know, five years down the road, telling somebody they got to put in an IA is going to ruin them. I mean, they're, they won't be living in that unit anymore.
Well, that makes your decision-making more difficult. Because you're passing the buck down, and, yeah, that's a decision.
They don't have anybody to pass the buck to.
And it's a hard decision, because we don't know, you know, we know, look, I, personally, if they're not in a watershed, they're not in a watershed, right? So if they're not in a nitrogen-sensitive area, they're not in a nitrogen-sensitive area. But if they're in a nitrogen-sensitive area, yeah, it's a tough decision, because the letters kind of come from the health. I'm going to be the real, most hated person in Falmouth eight years from now, because I'm sending out thousands of letters saying, "Hey, congratulations, it's time for your denitrification septic." I'm not looking forward to it. But that letter's going to come based on the map and the, right, based on the science of where groundwater flows, regardless of the nature of which the subdivision was created. Whether it was done by right, done through planning, or done recently by ZBA, the map's the map. Okay? And I don't know, we're not going to say you don't need it, because the ZBA didn't decide to have, make you have it back in 2025. Right? So I don't know how this, that's all going to work. Again, the regulation's going to be lengthy, and it's going to have to include things like, you know, 40Bs. Do, do houses on, certain types of homes, or homes that are, were done as, what's the term you guys use? The, you know, a body of 40Bs are like 80/20. The 20% affordable, is the word I was looking for, of the affordable units, I don't think they're necessarily going to get a waiver. I mean, that could be baked in, but that nitrogen pound of flesh, of nitrogen's going to come out of something. Because it's just, I look at this as a math test that we're trying to pass. Right here for our nitrogen, according to the MEEP study, we need to get to here according to the MEEP study. Where do we get the pound of flesh from? Where do we get our nitrogen from? And somebody's analyzing where to get it from. And so, yeah, you could bake in things like that, which just means more other people get it elsewhere, but it's a good question. Well, the thing is too, is a lot of the systems that are for 40Bs or for subdivisions are shared. So there's no way to parse that out. You're not going to, right? It's going to be one giant one in the yard for everybody in that subdivision when it's a shared system.
Well, again, the end result is the same to the, to the owner of the affordable unit.
Now, one thing to say before we go, I wanted to say, now, if the Board of Health in the future develops a regulation that all new construction increases in flow need to have IAs, it's taken you off the hook, hasn't it? Right? So I, that, that might be something that's in the future. It's actually on our agenda Monday. The Buzzes Bay Coalition's been asking the Board of Health to consider it. We just did our regs back last winter. And so the board will have to open up another hearing if it chooses to do it. It's entirely up to the, to the Board of Health, you know? Much like, you know?
All right, Mike, we need to wrap this up. You all set?
I'm, I'm good at the moment.
Anybody else all set up here?
Oh, we don't.
I hope you're not more confused, I hope you're.
No, I appreciate it. I, I've, I've learned myself.
Okay, great.
I think it was great. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott.
Can I ask a question?
Let's up to them. Make it quick, please. Quick question.
Yeah, I'm coming right up after this property that they.
Got to speak into the microphone, sorry.
You got to come up and ask. Thank you, thank you, Mike. I don't know if I should be allowing a case question.
Yeah, I'm Robert Pena. I'm coming up with a, I'll be up next, I think, for something that is close to this, all these things you're talking about. My question to Scott is, is the property that we're currently working on, this 40B, is it in a nitrogen-sensitive area?
We're going to do this, instead of me saying yes or no, we're going to open up the map. So the other thing too, you might want to know, is coastal pond overlay districts that we have is essentially what the nitrogen-sensitive areas are. It was just a terminology change by DEP. We called them coastal pond overlay districts, and they renamed them something of nitrogen-sensitive. So what's your property address?
19 North Falmouth Avenue.
Oh, that's an M, sorry. So we're going to do coastal pond overlay district instead of nitrogen-sensitive. No. So you've got West Falmouth here, and you've got Wild Harbor here, you're in, you're sandwiched in the middle.
Right.
So as of today, no.
And as of today means?
I don't know, I don't know the future. So you see, like, you know, you see this, you see this here, that may at some point in the future, that, I think is Herringbrook, may, which might be shaped like this. A lot of the nitrogen that's being mitigated at Wild Harbor will work, because you see how this flows this way? It would kind of like do this thing. So he could, this lot may be out, if they make this one, it could be in. There's nothing here, this is like the cliffs. So the cliff is not nitrogen-sensitive, I mean, ocean. So again, these aren't for freshwater, so this Crocker's Pond would not be something from, that would be done with the DEP regs, because again, we're dealing with the salt bodies, not the freshwater. So he does, he's not, not currently in it. I don't know what the future holds for that one.
Great, thank you.
Okay.
All right, so we're going to take a five-minute break too. Thank you, Scott, very much.
Thanks, Mike.
We're going to take a five-minute break if anyone needs to, a five-minute break.
All right, we have Falmouth Estates, 19 North Falmouth Highway. What is he doing? Frank.
That's the one I'm going to read into the record.
Don't forget to stamp it in for me.
I'll read it anyway.
No, it has to be stamped if we receive something. It should be right under those plans, you got it? Good.
Let's see if it's the correct date. It is.
But come on up, Mr. -- oh, he's doing it, okay. Sorry.
I'm going to do it with him.
Oh, you are, okay. He's the techie?
Yeah, this is a...
He's the IT department.
It's a bottom of my paper. If you want us up first or any other people to comment on it.
We'll put it in the file, we'll just leave it.
All right.
Yeah.
So I guess, name is Robert Pena, his name is Robert Pena, it's my son. And so, you know, I want to address just a few things that all has to do with kind of what Scott was just covering here. First of all, this property is that, there's 19 North Falmouth Highway on 28th, does not fall into a nitrogen-sensitive area. Nor is it in a Zone 2 with the town wells or the private wells. We don't fall into any of those Zone 2s either. We're not in a long pond watershed. So, nor are we in any, so we're not in impaired watershed either. So it's kind of like a very serendipitous, but that's where we're at. So what I want to cover tonight, one of the things I want to cover tonight is, or some of the stuff I want to cover tonight, is Crocker Pond and Herringbrook. And there's been a whole barrage of letters coming in from the Buzzes Bay Commission, Buzzes Bay Coalition. So there's a couple of things, and those letters are very consistent. And I want to address a couple of those things. So I want to start right off Crocker Pond. Here's the watershed.
He said he had it.
Robert's got the watershed that we're, that we're in. We're in watershed number two. Watershed number two does not, its point of, where the water leaves is into, is at the top of Herringbrook. It is, we are not, we do not feed into Bourne Farm. And you can see what it says at the bottom there. This, this letter, this, this document came from Ed Eichner, who's with TM LD Associates, who, who, who has hired his organization, that he works with all these folks, he's the lead guy in a lot of this stuff, by the DEP, Bonnsville County, and the town of Falmouth. When it came to the wastewater treatment plant, he's created a lot of these reports. And so regarding this, this whole thing, the information is readily available because of the extension of the beds 14 and 15, which are, which are, with the town made sure, if Robert can point to that, you'll see that the, that the wastewater treatment plant built that thing in the watershed that we're in. Because it's not a nitrogen-impaired watershed, whereas the one that they're in feeds West Falmouth Harbor. Okay? So in fact, there's that watershed, the same one that Scott just talked about, and the blue dot of beds 14 and 15. So, so that's, that, like I said, the document's his. So the, that's his assessment. And it's, it's, when you read the letter, it tells you how they came about this information. First of all, it says introduction and background. And it talks about the background of this group, and the whole ton of work they've done, and who they do it for. You know, start with the UMass Dartmouth, a CMAS who does it for the DEP, they're a subcontracted DEP, they're actually doing the work. And this report was based on the Herringbrook report because Buzzes Bay Coalition, you know, rejected what they were saying. Now this stuff here, this report, is based on a whole multitude of scientists. And most of the letters you get from Buzzes Bay Commission are from somebody who's a lawyer, not a scientist. Okay? Until the one we got today, and I want to go over that one as well. Here's their approach, A, B, C, D, and E, is their approach to how they come up with this stuff. And they say at the top that the procedures for the ecosystem assessments previously approved, that were previously approved by the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection. And that's a tough group, as we all know. You get down to point D and C, it's a watershed delineation assessment of current and future land, it covers current and future land use, and determination of existing and future watershed nitrogen loads from wastewater, fertilizer, and stormwater runoff. So what they're saying there, they've determined, when they're looking, and by the way, I go to these water quality meetings, I've been going to some of them. And what they're talking about is how many houses are in that watershed, based on the current zoning. You can see they've got lines on these things, so they can delineate exactly how many houses are in that zone, based on the town's zoning bylaw book. In this watershed, there's 440 single-family homes, home to me by Ed Eichner. Okay? Out of the, in that watershed, there's 360 of those houses, 360 out of 440 have been built on. So there's 80 left that you can build on. When you get down here to, to number, to E, that basically in a nutshell, what they're saying is when they gave this determination about Herringbrook, even with a current full buildout, it doesn't come close to even impairing this watershed. Doesn't come close. So A, we're not, we don't feed, we don't even feed into Buzzes Bay Coalition. Even though you've got a ton of letters from this organization that says we do, we don't. Okay? And this is based on DEP standards, Cape Guard Commission standards, Town of Falmouth standards, and the Board of, excuse me, the Water Quality Committee. This information was ascertained by, that report that Scott, I'm very familiar with what he had up on that board. Those are the reports that are put up by the Science Wares organization. I know Noreen's familiar with all these folks. The sci, and we've got the letter from them. I'll be submitting all this stuff. It says, here she says, the woman who heads up the Science Ware, she says, "Just to summarize, as we discussed," because I had a meeting with her, me and my family, we had a meeting with her, "just as we said, this parcel is not presently in a defined nitrogen-sensitive area and does not fall under Title V upgrade mandate." And then she goes on, she says, "Well, the watershed that the parcel is in is on the integrated water list, which does require to have a TMDL, which does mean it's going to require these IA systems completed for, unless data is submitted to show that it's not impaired." Well, here we go. The data that this group put together shows it's not impaired. She goes on in this letter, this Science Ware, she goes on and tells us that, that the town of Falmouth is not, and like many towns, they're not, they haven't been expedient about changing that statement that was in there from 2012 to 2013. I've talked to the DEP, and I've talked to the EPA. The DEP says that the last time that thing was put in there, even though the Buzzes Bay Coalition talked about it, was back then. Back then, any concerned citizen, any ad hoc group could put that information in there. It appears from the conversation I had, that it was Buzzes Bay Coalition to put it in there. So all their letters, they point this out, they're only recognizing something that they did. Now, you can do it every two years. They haven't, nobody's done it since then. But the, what the woman from Science Ware says is that eventually, it takes about seven years to change this stuff, by the way, from one grade to another. So I find it kind of disingenuous that somebody said, knowing that the folks from these organizations, they must be reading all this stuff. Think about it. This is how they make their living. They must be reading this stuff. But yet we get a series of letters that say, "Oh, when the town of Falmouth gets done, this is going to happen." Now, the woman from Science Wares, and I'm sorry for not remembering her name, the woman from Science Wares is telling me that, that they started their, all these watershed information, all the watershed information that they'd come up with, they put a, they, that's a TMDL watershed, they take that information and they do a study on that watershed. Because this watershed where this property is located is not in a watershed, as I read to you, they've already bypassed it. They're already past that. They're down in the East Falmouth, they're in the southern part of town right now. In other words, just like you saw in that thing, there shall be no, they've already, when they did the information, and when they gathered all the information, all the scientists, and it's groups and layers, and I'm sure this is the stuff they submitted to town meeting. Now understand something. I think we've got a letter here. We've got a letter here that was in the, a story that was in the Falmouth Enterprise. I don't know if anybody's here from the Falmouth Enterprise, but it's in big, bold letters. Amid nitrogen concerns, Herringbrook and West Falmouth is healthy. So they did all this additional work and spent money because of the letters they were getting from this organization. At the very end, they contacted them, and it says at the very end of that letter, they did not respond. Okay? It's that simple. I can't say it any simpler. Okay? Now, here's some key points from Ed Eichner. Nitrogen TMD were developed based on the individual characteristics and sensitivity of each estuary. The volume of water in the Bay Romage, and how quickly that water was exchanged by the tides, and how the ecosystem responded to the watershed inputs of nitrogen. The approach, the approach allows the town to spend, to spend restoration resources effectively and efficiently, and move, and move away from the generalization, onsite, fits, once it's all approach. And point number four here, which we've got up on the screen, Robert's got it right there. And point number four, he says, "Use of denitrification septic systems will reduce wastewater nitrogen, but the added cost of a denitrification septic system in the Herringbrook watershed is not supported by the individual characteristics of Herringbrook ecosystem." Number five, he says, "Policy should not be driven by, should be driven by science, not the other way around." Listen, I don't know this guy. I have never met this guy. I just knew that he heads up a lot of these studies, and gets hired by the organization that the Department of Environmental Protection contracts them. As I said before, to repeat myself, the Cape Guard Commission, I talked to them about him and everything that he's done, and the town of Falmouth and his input into the wastewater system up on the hill. Okay? So it's clear. It's clear. Then he comes back and he says, under six, he says, "The nitrogen loads from your development will not impact Crocker Pond. It is not in its watershed. In addition, freshwater ponds are sensitive to phosphorus, not nitrogen. So adding septic systems that reduce nitrogen to protect the pond is the wrong tool for this job." Now, yesterday, the Coalition had a letter come in here by, her name is Dr. Jacoba. And she says, hey, listen. You know, she can, she's, she's reiterating everything that the Coalition has already stated. So this gentleman from this, Ed Eichner, I sent him everything that I have taken from everything, the correspondence and this, and this relationship with the board. He says here, "Also, Dr. Jacoba's nitrogen loading math is wrong." The MEP, that's the Massachusetts Estuary Project, used 26.25 milligrams per liter for calculating wastewater nitrogen loads, not 60, in her footnote. This means the estimated wastewater end load would be less than half of what she calculated. Odd that she used the West Falmouth Harbor MEP report than the site-specific information that's available already in Herringbrook. So why would somebody do that? Okay? The information's readily available. But in her footnotes, she states where she got the information from. You can read the letters. You can read it. Tomorrow, all this will be submitted to Noreen. So, and I'm seeing this, just kind of straightening out all these letters that have come in and some of the comments that I've heard regarding how we, how Crocker Pond is, is at Bourne, at Bourne Farm is, we're upstream from that, and we're not. We feed right into Herringbrook, which flushes out and goes right up to the ocean. That's why that watershed is not in a, is not considered nitrogen-sensitive. Now, interestingly, the Bourne Farm itself is in that watershed, for Crocker Pond. You can see it right there. That's the map that the town relies upon and the DEP relies upon. Those are all subwatersheds. Like a watershed, you get a watershed, but the watershed itself is made up a budget of subwatersheds. And if, I think Robert already showed you the, the beds 14 and 15, that the town, in its wisdom, put in that watershed, in the watershed, this one that we're talking about. If you look at it on a map, do you have the other maps, Robert? Can you bring down? There you go. Point out where, there it is, where's Thomas Landers Road? There's Thomas Landers Road. That watershed is literally about 15 to 20 feet, I'm sorry, not that watershed. That beds 14 and 15 were constructed, now this is from Amy Lowell, I went to conversations with my wife and she chatted with her. That, and we knew it anyway, but just wanted the paperwork to confirm, was constructed in that watershed, because it's the best place to put it. It's in the least egregious place. Now these folks at this Coalition, they talk about how much money, million of dollars, the numbers $360,000 allocated to the town for these groups that, Robert, go to, go to the groups, please, that did all these assessments. Okay? Not some attorney who is, who's got nothing on the hook. You know, when you're, you know, we all know from college, and you write something, you bibliography it, and you cite it. None of that is done with them. And once in a while, they might cite something. These are the organizations on this report, that back up this report. I just wanted to put this thing to rest. Okay? Because we were told at the beginning, try to even purchase this property from Noreen. The first thing I did was I called Noreen and talked to her about it, I think Noreen may remember it. And she told me, "Well, look, you're not in these two, you're not in the watershed of Wild Harbor or West Falmouth Estates. You're also," I believe she told me, or somebody else in town told me, because I've met with quite a few folks, you know, "You're not in Zone 2, not in the long pond watershed. In fact, not impaired watershed." I asked Scott that question. You saw me ask it to him. I met with Scott probably five times. Scott has told, you've gotten a letter from Scott. You've asked him about the referral process. I'm sure you probably have read his referral, that this property is not in a, well, he will be recommending Title V standard systems for this particular development, because it's not in a nitrogen-sensitive watershed. So, just back to that, go ahead.
Got to wrap it up, please, Mr. Pena, you've had your 15.
I'm sorry?
You've had 15 minutes, can you wrap it up, Ford?
I appreciate you've had 15 minutes, but I'm probably the only person going to speak on this, and I know the other folks all have an hour. So I, how much time are you going to give me to go through all this information I have?
Well, we have to continue because we don't even have our peer review tonight.
Okay. I can appreciate that, I just want to, I just want to, and I'm, I'm, I know, I'm not trying to come off fresh, I just want to put this thing to bed.
No, but our peer review may want a copy of everything, so it's good if you give it to Noreen, and we can give it to the peer review.
Do I understand that you have not submitted, but you've been reading a lot of stuff. Have you not submitted it yet?
I talked to Noreen, and she told me I could read it into the record here.
But it's not on record yet. You're going to do it tomorrow?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, that's what I did before.
All right.
And I, and when I did it before, I told everybody here that was going to be my approach. And that was fine.
That's fine, but you're, you're, you're reading from something, and I'm looking at my notes and I can't find it, so now I understand why I couldn't.
Okay, well, on that page, okay. All this information relates back to the main letter that we have up here right now. That is what I handed out to you guys at the beginning.
This one here.
That's read it, yeah, okay, yeah, right.
I just want to understand what you're doing, that's all. I'm not taking issue with anything you're saying, but...
Well, this letter kind of says it, before I got up, I guess like...
And there was a letter from a woman, that you couldn't remember her name. Can you submit that too?
I'm going to submit, I'm going to submit more than, I'm going to submit as I did before, a number of letters. I was talking about the woman, her name is Dr. Jacoba.
Okay.
From, and she sends a letter, it's a scientist who sends it in on Buzzes Bay Coalition letterhead, which means she works for them. That's not arm's length. And then the guy, Ed Eichner, he pointed out that she used the wrong math, and she also used the math from West Falmouth Harbor, and that when he talks about the Herringbrook watershed, it's already been established it's clean. The town of Falmouth, you know, I guess we all trust in Falmouth, the town of Falmouth, I don't believe they would ever put an extension to the wastewater treatment plant for beds 14 and 15 into this watershed, if they thought that they were doing something wrong. That's why the, when you look at the map that Robert had up there...
Go ahead, Mike, you have a question?
Yeah, I just, and I have some familiarity with this. I attended many of the wastewater quality meeting, you know, water quality manager meetings. And, you know, I just want to point out two things. That your letter from Science Wares, her quote was, "It's presently not." It didn't say that it is not. So that's kind of a qualifier. And also, I'd like to point out, I mean, if the location of beds in 14 and 15 were, as you state, then the town is searching for an outfall pipe because they will not allow more flow into those beds. So it, it's, and again, I'm going to research this further, but it, on the surface, it doesn't seem quite so cut and dry as you presented. Because they are searching for an outfall pipe, aren't they not? Because they cannot put any more into those beds. I'm quite sure that's what the...
Yeah, but the, the math is based on the number of units, housing units, residential housing units, commercial and industrial, in that watershed. And that's how these reports are created. The one you saw earlier, that's how they're created. They're not created on what's there now, they're created on the potential, and in this watershed, that includes the permit that the town has gotten from the DEP. So it already takes that into consideration.
Yeah, I mean, as I say, they, they won't allow any further into beds 14 and 15, or whatever they are, 12 and 13, I don't remember. And that's why we're searching for the outfall pipe. And then again, it just, it just stood out to me, from Science Ware, she says presently. I mean, that's kind of a qualifier. But I, and I'm going to...
Well, let me, let me say this, that the entire town, everybody's in a watershed, everybody.
Absolutely. We have more watersheds than anybody on the case.
Well, no, I know, I, what I'm stating is everybody's in a watershed. If it rains on your property, you're in a watershed, because when it goes underground, it goes somewhere. And along those lines, we did the math, and the town, well, let me pre-qualify that by saying, the meetings I've gone with the Water Quality Committee, they talk about this stuff, but the biggest thing they talk about is how is this all going to get paid for? How's this all going to get paid for? You're talking, it could be hundreds of millions of dollars. They're going to do a betterment, and Scott mentioned that stuff. Are they going to hit each person and make them put these watersheds, excuse me, these IA systems in? So the, you know, unfortunately, some people may not even know this is going on. One guy at the Water Quality Meeting last night said it could be up to $80,000 a system. And so that's devastating to some people, they can't even afford the mortgage. Is the town going to put a betterment on their thing? Are they going to foreclose it on taxes if they don't, if they don't, if they don't put a system? put a system in? You know, you're talking hundreds of millions of dollars. So, but yet, even with what you're talking about, Mark, it's, the reports that, that Science Wares puts out are based on a full build-out. Because the town's got a finite number of houses in it that are in certain zones...
We're going to cut them off.
We're good.
We have to, we have to move along. Anybody else up here have any further questions? Before we go to the public, I want to let you guys know that this is being continued to October 17th, and we're going to have a peer review go over this and get into detail. I don't know if you want to come up now and speak quickly, you're welcome, but it's going to get, October 17th will be more information. But you're welcome to come up now, and if anyone has a question or a comment, come on up. Can, can we have the podium? Thank you.
Hello, my name is Phyllis Littleford. I am the property owner of 15 North Falmouth Highway. I want to make it clear, someone from the board asked a question at the last meeting if there were any historical homes in that area, and response was no, but that's not the case. My home at 15 North Falmouth Highway is historical, it's in the historical district, and it is listed as a historical home of significance, and that's with the, listed in Boston Historical Commission. There are a few things I wanted to ask. At the last meeting, I requested an explanation of the 60-feet layout where the owner is in a butter, and I'm wondering if anyone is here to explain that.
You want me to explain that?
No, no, no. That's, that's a good question for when the peer review does come here, because he'll go over all that.
Okay, because I did ask that question the last time. Now that the number of homes have been decreased from 24 to 20, what is the new market value of these homes? How much are they going to sell for? Originally, it was $750,000 per unit, and is the affordable homes going to still remain at the $225,000? And a very important question, or request that I made, was in regard to the entrance of the roadway into this development. They moved 10 feet to the north, and also, if that's not possible for some reason, to move it 20 to 30 feet to the north. I don't want that little curve that they have on the map, which is part of my property, to be used for this development. And I want that perfectly clear. Do not touch my property. It is inherited from my grandfather on down to my mother and myself, and now to my daughter. So, the property line is established, I don't want it touched, I don't want to participate in anything else to do with it. Also, last year, when the engineers were at the property of 19 North Falmouth Highway, the engineers and myself were looking for the boundary marker at the end of my property, which is trying to have the curve there, and it couldn't be found. So I'm wondering how that boundary was established by the new owners of this property, and why wasn't the property or surveying map from Joanna Cadoza, which was left to her son Pio Cadoza, wasn't used? And I'm wondering, is the boundary marker correct as the new owners have placed? Also, there was a lot of debris left from the previous owner, and I want to know if all that debris has been removed from the new owner of that property. It was sold as is, as stated by the person who sold that property. So, I want to know if all of that debris has been removed. I don't want any of it to cross onto my property. I don't care if it's a soda can, I don't want it there, and it's not to be buried. Have any, oh, you mentioned that a peer group would come in and review...
Yep, they're going to walk the property and go through it, yep.
And they go over all the waivers? Okay. The most important one to me right now is the curve that he wants for his entrance.
You can bring that up to the peer review, and he's going to be here doing a presentation.
Okay. Okay, because I have a lot of other...
Yep.
...questions to present, and I know we're already running late, but those are one of the significant ones that I wanted to...
Great, I appreciate it.
Madam Chairman, through your... Madam, you can submit your questions to the peer reviewer through the zoning administrator that will save time. He can address your concerns.
Who is it?
Submit them through Norine if you have specific questions that you might want addressed, or he may very well be in his presence.
It's a good idea, because then he'll have them, and he'll just address them.
So the 60-feet layout isn't going to be addressed today?
No.
Even though I asked at the last meeting?
No.
Okay.
The peer review will do it when he comes.
And that's it?
You should submit those, that was a great idea, to submit them to Norine, and then she can give them to the peer review.
Okay.
And you're free to have your own property surveyed, if you...
Pardon?
You're free to have your own property surveyed.
I've had it surveyed twice. My mother had it surveyed in the 60s, and, yes.
Well, as far as to indicate, you know, that corner that you're concerned with.
Yeah, it's a straight line, he's made it into a curve.
Well, if you had it surveyed and you had a stake or a marker put in now, so you, you know, I mean, then there would be no argument. Or perhaps it would be.
But anyway, write those all down and give those, submit those to Norine.
So your suggestion is have it surveyed again?
I mean, if you're concerned.
I can submit what I have, I'm not going to survey it again and spend more money for the interest of somebody else to make more money from it.
Well, if you're confused as to where your property corner is, you said you could not find the boundary. I mean, a proper survey would delineate...
They couldn't find it at the time, even though they had a drone flying overhead, and I was standing there. So I'm wondering how they got that property marker onto that particular piece.
Yeah, like I said...
Mystery, isn't it?
Well, a survey would, and a stake would solve that, you know, I'm...
All right, thank you.
Yep, thank you. Come on up. Name an address, please.
Good evening, Mason Wilcox at 20 North Falmouth Highway, across the street. My wife has spoken in the past. So I've lived at that house since 2012. First administratively, I'd like to submit amended comments that I had submitted August 1st to include my name. I neglected to do that, and my wife got mad at me. So, going on, I have some highlights that I do want to bring up, and I'm not going to repeat other people. So, at the last meeting, there was a comment, there was only two accidents found in the last several years in that area. I have five instances of pictures of car accidents, specifically drunk drivers, and the guardrail. I know Bourne Farms had their guardrail replaced several times. And also, videos that I've submitted to the police department because of my security system. I don't understand why they have a trouble with their database and can't manage it, but that's beyond this conversation. Also, I want to bring attention to the numerous trucks from the fueling company that go up and down that road all the time, and the recent rollover, I'm going to submit all these photos for the record, the recent rollover, the mulch truck on the ramp at 28A, and also, the recent car fire back in May that took out power, as we all waited nervously for Nervosource to come turn it back on. So I will submit these, they're all dated, for the record.
Great, thank you.
Moving on, yes, I moved in in 2012. I became very friendly with Mr. Cardoza back in the day, before he passed away. Learned a lot about what he used to do there. He had a mechanic shop, my property had a mechanic shop also, and I understand, Pio had told me that there was a lot of nasty work that went on. I used to do environmental remediation work before my time in the Coast Guard, and learned a lot about older homes, and popular mechanics had articles about just dump oil on the ground to get rid of it. I urge the, the town and the zoning board to require a 21E, I know that's for commercial use, but I would not be surprised if during a geo-prob exercise throughout the property, that we're going to find things like what Base Cape Cod did back in the 50s. Would not be surprised. Moving on, I am on the Historical Commission for the record, I'm not representing them, but I'm representing a person who does live in the historical districts. I understand that under the 40B, some of the historical can be waived straight out. All of us in the neighborhood, we spend a lot of time and money to build our homes in keeping with the historical guidelines, a lot of time spending extra money. I urge the ZBA to, to require the management of this project to go before historical, not for clearance, but for consideration, such as when other projects that are in the historical districts may not be required to, but come in for comment. The Coast Guard did that several years ago, down at Woods Hole when they did a rebuild, they went in for comment, even though they could tell the Historical Commission to have a good day. And they did, they built the building in keeping with the historical requirements out of the goodness of being a good neighbor. There was comments about sidewalks. Yeah, I know there's no sidewalks in the neighborhood, you've got to start somewhere. So just because it's not there already, you know, it doesn't mean that we can't require them to start putting in. I would love to put a sidewalk in front of my house. I would absolutely love it, because I get so scared about people walking along 28A all the time. And there's sidewalk down a little bit further south of my house. And the last thing I'm going to bring up, the, the plan for the property currently has the exit driveway in front of my house. This picture was taken today, I'll, I'll present these, Norine, out the front door of my house, and that center stake is the center of the anticipated driveway. Currently, the driveway is in front of my driveway with a tree, which helps in case we get drunk drivers, which never happens in that neighborhood, okay? Or just careless drivers, snow and ice, you know, it gets, you know, we all know the weather around here. If, if anything, I'm not fighting the number of houses, those are further discussions down the road, but that driveway in front of my house is just going to, it needs to be moved, at least lined up with my driveway. I know that happened at Berkeley years ago, they did shift the driveway a little bit to line up the driveway, the gentleman across the street, versus the headlights into his house. And it all worked out. That's all I have to say, but thank you for your time.
Great, thank you. Don't forget to submit.
Say well.
Great, thank you. Anybody else from the public? Anybody else from up here? Norine, anything else on this you have?
I think just to answer one question, though, where there was a question about the affordable homes, and the state establishes the price for the affordable homes, and then for the market rate units, it's whatever the market bears, so...
Did you hear that, Mrs. Littleford?
Not quite.
She said that the, you can...
Okay, so the affordable homes, the state dictates the price for those, so those will remain relatively consistent. And then the market rate units are whatever the market bears, so those will fluctuate. But the board cannot control those.
Yes, not us.
Move to continue.
Yeah.
Move to continue to October 17th, second.
We have a motion to continue and a second. All those in favor? To October 17th? Aye. October 17th, 6:00 PM. I didn't even ask for any nays. All right, now we have poor Nick, who's been patient.
He's learned a lot by being here, though, right?
Well, it was good to hear the, for the health, I imagine, because you learned, we all learned. So I think tonight, we're basically going to go over, or at least I thought we were going to go over the Beals and Thomas.
I, yeah, I think, I think basically what we're here to say is that we think we've addressed all the issues with Beals and Thomas by way of engineering and plan changes or waivers, and we'll try and be a little more succinct, and if you have questions or you want to address something, we'll be ready to answer.
I wrote a few questions down myself, I don't know if anybody else has got their questions ready yet. Do we have all the information we need from Mass Housing, since you're switching up here?
I believe we do. They sent a letter in.
Do we have everything? We have the letter from Mass Housing, we have, everything's coming? Okay, perfect, good. Now, go for it.
If you're switching from rental to homeownership, given the fact that you've got these two family houses, is this going to be a condominium?
It is, yes.
So, you'll have to establish the condominium and the structure and so forth, and...
We will.
...give us the details of all of that.
Because condo docks have to get reviewed by Town Council as to make sure any conditions you put in are in the condo docks.
All right.
And also have to have a, well, before we can get final approval, which allows us to pull building permits, we have to have our lottery marketing plan accepted, contract signed with lottery and monitoring, and condo docks, and several other things have to be done. We still have the 81X plan to do, and we still have our EPA plan, construction general permit to get. We're working on both of those things, but there was no sense getting them until we had, make sure there were no changes to the plans on your end.
Can I ask, for my own curiosity, why you switched it up?
That's my question.
The, the owner didn't want to do another rental. He, I know he had a grant already approved from the Falmouth Affordable Housing Fund and just decided to shift gears and build for-sale units, so...
All right, let's see what my questions are. Are you going to clear cut the entire property?
I would say yes, probably. I don't see a way to save any trees, except the perimeter.
Can we get some buffer on the outside? Can we get some buffer?
Well, before we cut trees, we'll go out there, we'll, we'll set our erosion control, and we'll mark the limit of clearing. And we'll go over that with the abutters, and if the peer review wants to come out and walk it and make sure we're not cutting anything we don't have to, that's the way it was done in previous projects. So, we'll mark the perimeter, the perimeter site where we're going to clear up to, and before we actually cut, we'll get reviewed with peer review and abutters.
Okay, and then reading this, we need a landscape plan.
I think we have a landscape plan, and I think that was submitted. Landscape and buffering plan.
We have one, okay, good. He just said he didn't, so I didn't look, didn't go through my plans. Anyone else have anything on their questions?
Not about that.
He also indicates we need to put those... He also indicates we need to put those things on the sidewalk, tactical?
Right. Yeah, I think, did you...
You can show that on the plan, too?
I think we addressed that on our revised plans.
Not tactical?
Tactical's what it's called.
Tactile, tactile.
I'll go with the tactical team. But, um, but you'll, you'll show that on a plan?
I believe it's shown.
It's shown in our revised plans, yes.
All right, trying to think of what else he put on here. He said that the lines, or that you did address the water lines. The snow storage, have you figured that out yet, or are you just shipping it out?
Well, no, we're going to, we'll plow it onto the leaching field.
Going to put it on the kids playground?
Which is really no different than when it rains on the leaching field, so.
And is it okay to put that kind of weight on a leaching field? All right, that's it for me. Anybody else have any questions up here? Go ahead.
I just want to go back to the change in Mass Housing. You're the expert on 40B here, I'm not.
I wouldn't call myself an expert, but I am experienced at doing them.
You're more experienced tonight. I just want to make sure, if this board's going to spend its time looking at this as a homeownership now versus rental. When you apply for your PEL application, Mass Housing looks at rental a little bit differently than it looks at homeownership. In other words, is there a market for rental, or is there a market for homeownership? It also looks at, is the budget that you're presenting to Mass Housing at the time of PEL, applying for PEL, appropriate for rental or for homeownership? So you've got a letter that basically says, listen, for expediencies, I'm paraphrasing, for expediencies sake, we're not going to issue a new PEL. We've issued a PEL, and that PEL is based on rental. But you go ahead and present it to the Falmouth ZBA as a homeownership, and when you get back here for, it says, final approval stage, we'll then make a, at least that's the way I'm reading it, we'll make a decision whether or not you get the homeownership, or you get the original PEL approval, which is rental. Why, as someone who does this all the time, and I don't, why do you believe that by the time, if the board's going to spend time looking at this as a homeownership, why do you think that, when we get back to Mass Housing for final approval, that they're going to say, yeah, the market, market is good for homeownership, and the budget you presented to us for rental is going to work just fine? Why do you think that'll happen?
Well, I think what they're saying is that we, we don't have to amend our application at this point, that when we submit for final approval, we have to amend it anyway, with, based on changes that were made to engineering or anything else. They're basing their decision that it's okay to switch, even though it's a substantial change, because we're selling two and three bedroom units, which there's a market for. Mostly two bedrooms, but there's 10 twos, 1 ones, and 1 three.
So your belief is that, when it gets back to final approval, because it's a substantial change, it's not just the board adding conditions, it's you changing the entire marketing aspect of this, and that they will say, the market is appropriate for this type of housing, and the budget that you applied originally on your PEL application is appropriate for homeownership?
No, the budget we supplied was based on a rental.
I'm sorry, for a rental?
Right, so the, when we submit the new budget for, for sales, we won't exceed the 20% for sure. The 20% allowed profit margin.
Yeah.
And they're confident in that, because we haven't changed the unit mix, we haven't changed the building design, we haven't changed anything in the engineering. So they're, they were comfortable, in their opinion, that we could just take it up on final approval application.
All right, so we're not wasting our time?
No, 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 I don't, oh, I don't think there's a chance that they're not going to approve it.
So if we're looking at this, if I may, Madam Chair, if we're looking at this now as homeownership, these units have been set up for rental, and don't we have to start considering laundry hookups, maybe in addition to adding basement stairs versus just having a bulkhead to get to the basement, and decks, patios, and then, of course, the sheds always comes up? This is homeownership and will require more. And if you're going to sell these in the market, do you really think that the people want to go outside and then down the bulkhead to get to their basement? Or are you going to accept a condition from us that says you need to put interior stairs in the basement?
I don't think we have any place to put the interior stairs, and we have successfully sold units where you had to go outside to get into your basement. And in that project, I'm talking about Crooked Meadow, we were selling at the end of, for over $500,000. In that project, we had the electric meters in the basement and the water heaters in the basement, that was it. In this project, we're putting the electric panels on the first floor. The only thing will be in the basement will be their water heater. So they won't need to go down there unless they need something out of their basement for themselves.
So you don't believe that adding basement stairs is going to be required? What about decks, patios, and sheds?
They have, they have patios, there's no decks. They have patios, there's really no place to put sheds. We actually looked at that, seeing if we had a spot on each lot to put a shed.
Where people store things?
Basement.
But that, all right. What about laundry hookups?
Each, each unit has a laundry hookup, and we supply the, we supply the machinery, too.
All right. May I ask a couple more questions?
Sure, go for it.
We heard tonight from our Board of Health agent, and I thought it was extremely helpful and very grateful that he took the time to come here. Although, I'm still a little confused. And one of the things I've brought up with you in the past is the fact that you are in a nitrogen sensitive area. You've asked us to waive Section 247.2, coastal bond overlay district requirements, out of which is that it's not five lots or five acres or more. Yet, you want to build six duplex or 12 units on just something slightly less than five acres. So it's just common sense, it says whether it's one lot or five lots, it's just a very poorly written, a weekly or something, weekly written bylaw in that case. Given that, if we held you to 7.2, the requirements of that, which then go down to 13.1, and it goes on and on and on, and your engineer knows this far better than I know, this, you have to show that your project is not adding more of a nitrogen load, and please correct me anytime, because I'm trying to read this thing carefully. You have to show this board, or if it was the planning board, but you have to show this board that you're not adding more nitrogen load to what's already there. And if you can't do that, this board can actually deny you. In other words, if you can't show that you're not adding more. So it goes beyond IA systems or Title V systems. It's, you have to show this board that you're not adding a greater load. You heard our health agent say, empty lot, you add more houses, you're adding load. So then you have to show, if you are adding load, and again, tell me if I'm wrong on this, that you can mitigate that, to bring it to, not that zero, but not let it become greater than. So I'm just saying this now to you to consider, and your engineer considered that, even though this is not broken down to five lots, but is, I think it's six units, 12 uni, six duplexes, 12 units, common sense says, well, that's greater than five lots, because if this were a normal situation, you'd need six, at least six lots. And it's certainly not, it's just short of five acres. So again, common sense says, we should consider applying 247.2. It's just me saying this, one member, and I'm going to hopefully convince other members during discussion that that's what should apply as part of the conditions. I'm throwing that out for you to consider. And of course, if I'm wrong, I'll certainly want to know.
I'll take it a step further, if I may, Madam Chair. Is an IA system going to make this project uneconomic?
I believe it will. Very expensive. And especially where we, we have sewer coming down that street, which is in the plan. That's one that the plan actually is focusing on, Acapescot Road. And then we're going to be required to connect to it. So we're going to pay for the system, then five years, six years, whenever that time is, shut it down and connect to the sewer for whatever the fee is going to be.
Well, the health agent made the point that they want to make sure those situations don't happen, but I have to ask the question for the record, so thank you.
Go ahead.
I mean, I, my concern is the affordable units, you know, and the impact, and, you know, and I know, I'm familiar, I mean, we're searing in that direction, towards Bacoit Bay, so I mean, it is coming. I, you know, and I'm a stickler for this stuff, but I mean, you know, within 10 years or so, it's, it's going to, there's absolutely going to be a sewer there. So it's my opinion that to saddle you with that expense is probably not...
Unnecessary.
Unnecessary. And whatever, that's...
But we could deny it outright if it's adding additional load and they can't mitigate it. And we know, he's already told us, he's not sure when he'll be able to connect to it. So the argument has to be made, that we don't know when the sewer system will be there, and what additional water pollution, nitrogen load, is safe and not safe. What do we allow? I mean, where does it stop? We don't know, he doesn't know, the town doesn't even know when that sewer line...
It's, it's the next one after...
Yeah, but they, we don't know that.
No, we do not know.
How many years? You have to consider that if they're adding nitrogen load in the watershed district, what damage does that do to the system?
So my suggestion would be, I think that's, we just ask for an updated referral from Board of Health. Is this, is this a situation where...
Yeah.
They're not recommending IA because of the fact that, and then, that's, I think, I believe are...
That's a good idea.
Yeah.
Expert on that particular issue.
I just want to know how the, the Board of Health will merge what they do and what they think with Section 247.2 in its conditions that go further on to 240, 13.1D, and all the way down the list. I want to know how that happens. It seems to be a disconnect, and again, I'm confused, a little confused about this, and I'll need help to get past that. But I, there appears to be a little bit of a disconnect between what this board might condition as a requirement, and what ends up coming out of the Board of Health. And if we condition, if we do, I don't know if we will, if we did, is the Board of Health just going to say, well, we don't care what the ZBA says?
I don't think they say they don't care.
Well, let me put it this way, will the, would the Board of Health then say, we are not going to consider 247.2 or 240.13? That, again, these are questions posed only for consideration.
Yeah, no. After hearing that, it's a legit question.
Yeah, I don't know. It would be nice if you could clear it up at some point.
You interpret that, you interpret that part of the bylaw differently than I do. I don't, I don't interpret it as, first of all, one of the most important things I think he said was, there is no place in Falmouth where a nitrogen IA system is required. So it's not required here. It's desired.
So conversely, if you can't prove that you can mitigate the additional load, then the bylaw says you can be denied.
I don't think he said no place.
I think, I thought, that's what he said.
I don't believe so, because they have required it.
Just let me just stand this for a second, because I'm just one person.
Well, I mean, that's not the point, though. The point is, your question, you have to make a decision if you want to impose that condition on us, and then we have to decide what we're going to do. We're asking for the waiver. We think it's an appropriate request for a waiver. It's not the first time it's been granted, and...
I'd rather see us work something out if it's, if it's number one possible to work out. Because no one in this board wants to cause you any more expense than is really necessary. But there are bylaws, and we try to apply appropriately, that's all.
And I, I agree with you and everything, but, I mean, the state has provided a 20-year window, you know, if you go to the TMDL process. And I mean, it certainly, with the pace we've been making in the sewer, I mean, you can certainly, I think everybody can agree that that's going to be sewered there within 20 years. And, I mean, there's...
Well, then there's a condition that they must attach to the sewer.
Oh, yeah, they'll have to. It's absolutely, once the sewer goes down, you have to attach to it.
Once the plants change, I believe that you are, you have the stubs ready to go, so that's the reason why I'm very much in favor of giving a waiver in this situation, because I think sewer is coming, and they've, they're ready to be hooked up.
For your votes of the voting members, so...
And should something go wrong, and sewer doesn't come in, we have allowed an area where we can put in a denitrification system.
They have a reserve area, so if it's later mandated...
So you're meeting what the Board of Health looks for?
Madam Chair, one more thing, and that is, the bylaw specifically, specifically says that if you add nitrogen load, which this will do, and you can't mitigate it, then the board, I suppose, could waive it, but it says, I don't think it says you can waive it. I don't know that. Again, I need, I'm bringing it up for discussion and not necessarily resolution tonight.
Well, we were going to ask to close the public hearing tonight.
In addition...
40B allows us to waive it, they didn't have to say so.
The reason I ask the question is, they're asking for the waiver, standard Title V. We say no. Ask the question, is this now going to render the project uneconomic, which they have to then show somebody? Correct. And the hack could say, nope, they're going to get their waiver for Title V. So this is one of the last situations where that could happen, where they can go to the hack, but that's the reason why I asked the question, Mr. Marioni.
So then this becomes moot, then?
Right.
In this location.
In this particular case.
This particular location, but I mean, everything's written for the, for the whole town, you know? I mean, and there's, and I can think of another one where, well, I won't bring it up.
It is a worthwhile discussion, and my suggestion is...
And this discussion will be had again.
And it should be had, perhaps made our Saturday Working Group with this Board of Health, where we can ask for guidance about it. Can you please identify properties where, this is a property where we're willing to, it's okay to waive, and this is one we really need to increase our denite systems, so, but I'm going to suggest perhaps...
These are real issues and real important issues, traffic and sewer, but they're not issues that we can solve. They're issues the town has to deal with.
Yeah, yeah.
And, and...
I think we're all set up here, everybody all set... Oh, I have one other question. The peer, the peer engineer said a signature block is still needed? Has that been done?
We're putting it on the plan, but we've never had to do it before, it must be something new.
It's on there?
For the record, Tim Santos from Merrill Engineers. We do have a block for the town clerk to stamp, but a block for zoning to sign, I've never had to do that before, so...
Not a subdivision?
No.
I've done it for subdivisions, for the planning board, but never for zoning. If there is something new...
No, it's just the peer might have got confused, as, as I do.
He wasn't happy to add it.
No, we don't need it.
Here we're discussing that subject, there is some question about the difference between the board signing a subdivision, or what they're doing is they're taking two lots here, and they're creating one new lot. So in the past, some people have produced these 81X plans, but there seems to be some lack of agreement within the town about whether a board actually needs to sign a new Mylar plan, because you are actually creating a new lot from two lots.
And since planning can't get involved...
And so, in that circumstance, if they're expecting the board to sign on a Mylar, that would, yeah.
Well, in this case, it may, the problem may be, will it be accepted at the registry of deeds?
This is Land Court, too.
Well, the Land Court, so if it won't be accepted without a signature block, then we should have one.
So this, this is Land Court, so when, and hopefully we get the approval, then we'll be providing plans to Land Court to combine the plans. So we did provide the board with an 81X plan that shows the lots being combined.
Right, but you may need an endorsement.
You check the Land Court, Land Court regulations, you may need it.
Yeah, I can call the Land Court engineer and talk to him about that.
So where we're getting to the end of things, I did have a question about sheds. We have had a circumstance recently where Housing Hack decided that people could have sheds, and so I think by the representation that no one's going to have a shed is not going to fix the problem, because there's nothing that prohibits those future... going to fix the problem, because there's nothing that prohibits those future homeowners from asking for sheds.
They're going to be regular homeowners.
And the question is, they apparently have a right to have one, so...
If the land is going to be held as a condominium and as a common area, then the condo docs could restrict it, we could certainly condition it that way, but they're free to change the, well, no, no, that's a condition, but...
So, I guess the question is...
And we go through the whole thing again.
They should just show them on the plans.
That needs to be managed.
Yeah.
I mean, the other part of the problem you have here is that the backyards, there's 10 feet from the back of the unit to the lot line. Now presumptively, there could be, for example, a tree that sits on a lot line. And if a tree, if the lot line bisects a tree, the tree is owned by both properties, and they do not have the right to cut down a tree that belongs to a neighbor without their permission. So, part of what they're going to have to look at there is how far they can clear so that they're not taking down trees that belong to someone else as well. So the other part is, you know, if you have, and certainly, if you literally have 10 feet from the back of the building to the lot line, you can't put in a 10-foot shed. You can't put in an eight-foot shed, because you may not be able to walk between the house and the shed. So, I guess the question is, where are the sheds going to go? People are going to want them, it's homeownership, right? And also, the plan that I have, the last copy of, also does not show a patio anywhere, and because it does not, it also didn't seem to reflect lot coverage by structure parking and paving that would include a patio.
Oh, um...
Yeah, so your, your landscape plan doesn't count.
It's, it's, there's a patio here and each...
Yeah, so that doesn't count, that has to be on a site plan.
Look at this landscape plan, it's the other people's property.
The patio on a landscape plan is not sufficient.
If you refer to Sheet 3 of 11, it shows the patios and the updated lot coverage includes the patios.
Okay, and what was that planned at?
8824, it was the most recent plans that we submitted, that went to Beals and Thomas as well. And it's Sheet 3 of 11.
Okay, so it shows patios?
It shows the patios on each unit, and the lot coverage is updated.
Man's old. Back to the shed issue. I only just breezed through it, but the upcoming changes going in front of town meeting, wasn't there something about shed distance from the lot line in there, or am I incorrect?
I don't think so.
No, not...
No, no. That wasn't discussed.
I like how you show the, the landscape plan, but it's on everyone else's property.
Yeah, this is, that was the wrong, that was the May 14th plan, I got to find it.
In a condo, you don't own your side or backyard.
No, I mean, he's showing all this beautiful green, but it's not even his lot.
By the way, this is the 81X plan we were talking about here. Shows the merger of the lot right there.
Oh yeah.
Two lots.
You have a designated common area.
Yeah, I still think you should try to show, show sheds on the plan.
I reserve for you all.
Yes.
I mean, you could do them at the side, maybe?
So what, you got three feet from the lot line? And you got 10 feet?
Right, sheds are supposed to be a minimum of three feet from a lot line.
Right.
So that leaves you seven feet if you butt it up against the house.
Over 100, it's 10...
You could put it up against the house.
They don't have room to put in a shed over 100.
I, I have a feeling that few people are going to decide to put a shed in. Maybe one of those little Rubbermaid things that'll go up against the house, but probably the extent of it.
It suggests addressing it, condo docs.
Okay, suppose we could do it that way, yeah. I don't know how enforceable...
What's going to stop them from doing the same thing they did on...
Only one condition, but it could also be in the condo docs, just saying, no exterior effects.
But I mean, the affordable unit could just bring it to the, and in the end, it would be the same result as happened.
If it's small enough, you don't even need a building permit, so anybody can do this in the middle of the night.
Yeah. In the middle of the day, you could...
Rather than our butt heads, I'm going to suggest we ask the applicant to perhaps come up with a proposal.
All right.
Yeah. Tell us how you feel you should deal with sheds and storage.
I don't really see any place where we can fit them. So I think, I think that, you know, we, we give exclusive use areas in there, in the condo docs and the, and the, when we do the Aspel plans, and I don't think we're going to have an area we can allow it in, that even an eight-by-eight shed would fit. Now, having said that, doesn't mean somebody can go and buy a four-by-four or five-by-five, like you're talking about Tupperware one. We, we can handle that in our condo documents, that we just don't allow those sheds.
Like, where are people putting their bikes? Down in the cellar?
In the basement. Everybody else puts them, I mean, we've got other units the same way, they'd put them in the basement.
When you buy the house, you know what you're doing.
You know what you're getting into, I guess, yeah.
You know, we could put a community shed out there that's, that's owned by the condo association, we have room for...
That might be a thought, you could come up with that and show where that could be on the plan, that's at least some form of storage. I, I think the basement thing's crazy.
We could put a community shed out in here, or over, you know, over in this area, where people could have areas in the sheds for their bikes.
Then how many mothers are going to yell at their kids to put their bikes in the cellar?
Yeah, this is the play area now. This, this, this is not the updated landscape plan that I submitted, apparently, because we took out the community garden.
I would not recommend a community shed in the play area, because...
Why don't we just say no sheds and prove it the way it is?
I guess the question is whether that's going to work.
Well, if you buy the unit without a shed, you know that you're buying it without a shed, and that's it.
And the condo documents can cover that.
Yeah, I think the next issue seems to be coming up is people looking to build over patios. So I don't know if that's something that can be addressed in the condo.
Yeah, it is, because that, that creates a problem with insurance when you build out over patios, over common areas.
So that can, that's, that's going to be dealt in the condominium.
Yes. That's building it with a common area as opposed to private ownership, you have to get permission of the condominium association to do this out.
All right.
It's an exclusive use area, it's part of the condominium docks.
It doesn't allow...
It doesn't allow any building over it.
All right, so anybody else have anything else? We're just, you have...
Continuing through October 17.
Question, with those latest plans, are the buildings dimensioned?
Yes.
Okay.
Move continued October 3rd.
You go, Noreen?
Would we like to close the public hearing tonight, if we could?
No.
No, I'm not prepared to close here.
I'm not ready.
What else do you need from us?
Well, you're going to find out about the signature block, that's one thing we need to figure out. We, we got a few things to do here, we're not ready yet. We're almost there.
What do we need to do?
We, we got two weeks, that's all. Just come on back in two weeks, we'll be done. I think.
What are we doing in those two weeks?
October 20, you're going to get...
We're not going to be bullied to close the hearing tonight, Mr. Marioni.
I'm not bullying, I'm asking a question, what are we doing in those two weeks?
You're going to get, he's going to call the Land Court, he's going to do that homework. What else do we need?
Make the motion to continue the hearing, please.
October 3rd.
October 3rd.
Now, I still ask, what do we need to do in those two weeks?
Find out when you come back, I guess.
Well, I just gave you two things. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None. Thank you. Oops, I can put away my paper, because I'm getting anxious. All right, let's get back to the stuff I was doing. God, I put it all away. Thank you. All right, so we're doing the minutes of the 15th only?
Yes.
Mm-hmm. I'll make the motion to do, to approve the minutes of August 15th. I have a second? Second from Jim. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then we did Scott, and then we have you, Noreen. Zoning administrator updates.
Zoning board continues to be busy. I don't have much new news to report to you in particular, so rather than pick up time, because I think it's been a long night.
That it has. Board updates, oh, we have to, that comes under the, the request we got today to go over our peer review. Is that under board discussion?
So you received a letter from Laura Winahan dated 9/11/2024, driving care engineering for 40B developments. She was looking to have the board discuss that today. I would suggest to the board that where it's not on the agenda for tonight, and you receive the information late, have sufficient time to consider, that we would calendar that for a future agenda for discussion.
Sounds like a plan.
So I'm proposing the date of September 26, which is your next regular hearing for non-40B cases.
Okay.
And we can recirculate the letter, people need another copy of it, consider it, we can discuss it.
Okay. Any other board discussion?
No.
Board updates? We have a, we have a Thursday off.
When?
There's an update.
You had to schedule it.
Next Thursday.
Thursday, we have the Zoom.
Tuesday, we have a Zoom.
We do have a meeting that I want to throw.
That's another update, Tuesday, we, Tuesday, we have a Zoom. But I'm happy. And future...
Well, what else matters?
Future agenda items.